Anybody have any questions for Doug? Okay, Doug, we can move on. Next on the agenda, 320 Conker Street.
This is really a real.
And there we go. We got one, we got two, we got three. Everybody's starting to come in. Rubel. Mr. Andronico, how you doing tonight, sir?
Doing all right. How are you?
Not too bad. I apologize. The last meeting ran a little bit late. I'm going to ask before we start this, I think most of my board members and more specifically myself need a five-minute facilities break. So give me, most specifically me, give me five minutes.
Really? Wow.
Someone has to mute their, their audio because we're hearing their television program.
All right, see what we got here. We've got, let's see, myself, Mr. Rubel, Mr. Baker, Mr. Panes is here. I see Mr. Galley is here. I see Attorney Galvin. I'm waiting for, let's see, I see Chuck. I see Mr. Tansey. All right, I think we got all our board members here. Who am I missing? Kim, are you here?
Yep, I'm here.
There you are. Kim, can you remind me who's voting on this?
Can you get John for me?
Yeah, so we had, hold on one second. It was you, Greg, and Baker Senior.
Myself, Greg, myself, Greg, Tim, and Mr. Baker Senior.
Yeah.
I blew Tim.
Yeah, so it was myself, Mr. Tansey, Mr. Baker, Mr. Haynes, and is Mr. Baker Junior voting on this or no? Because I don't think he can.
No, he wasn't here.
Yeah.
Meetings.
Yeah, so it was the, it was just the four of us when it first started too, I believe, because, okay. Attorney Galvin? I think he's in the bathroom. I wanted, I just wanted to get, we can address, we can address this, we can address this after. Everybody, everybody that I need right now is, is, you're semi in attendance, so. All right, let's get this party started. Notice is hereby given that a virtual remote continuous public hearing will be held at 7:30 PM on December 15th, 2020, on the petition filed under Chapter 40B, comprehensive permit by Shingle Mill LLC care of Conoco 40, 41st Street, Bridgewater, Mass. Oh, two, oh, two, three, two, four, to allow the construction of 236 units of residential housing, the project within two five-story buildings on approximately 29.33 acres of land located at Zero Pond Street and 152 Wilson Street, the site. The applicant, the applicant is proposing 25% of the units to be classified as affordable per mass general law, chapter 40B. The site is located on Zero Pond Street, Lot 13, Map 9, and 152 Wilson Street, Lot 68, Map 10. Copy of this application is available upon request.
I'll put my pictures and isn't coming up.
Mr. Ronan, can you mute yourself, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Copy of this application is available upon request electronically from the town clerk, seven, eight, one, eight, seven, one, one, eight, seven, four, extension one. Email address is the email address or the zoning board of appeals, same number. This meeting will be held, will only be held virtually and not in person. I'm going to leave it at that. All right, we're going to have, let's see, do I need, I think I need a roll call vote to technically open this?
Motion to open the meeting.
All right, I got, I got a motion to open the meeting. Do I have a second? I'll assume that I got a second. Mr. Tansey, you want to second that?
He's muted.
No, I'll second it.
Oh, there we go. Now, I had a second. I need a roll call. Myself is yes. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ronan, can you please mute yourself?
Yes, I'm trying to. Thank you.
All right, let's start, let's start again then. Myself is a yes. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Tansey?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yeah.
All right, we're all together on this. Let's see, let me just reorient myself with who's here, who's doing what. All right, Attorney Galvin is here. Before we go, before we go further, Attorney Galvin, I just had a question about this. When it comes to, when it comes to voting members, we only have four at this point. It is too late to have a new board member, Mr. Baker Junior, actually participate in voting, correct?
He can participate, but he shouldn't vote. This vote only requires a majority vote too, so.
All right.
Three, three of four will do it.
Will pass? All right. I just want to, I just want to say good evening to Mary Parsons. Hey, Ms. Parsons, how you doing?
I'm doing just fine.
Just wanted to acknowledge, how you doing? All right, let's see, reorient. Mr. Andronico, right in my center of page, how you doing, sir?
Doing well. How are you, Rob?
Not too bad. Just wanted, basically just set some ground rules a little bit. We're going to let Mr. Andronico just go over basically the new submission, talk about everything that's been basically determined by his team. From there, we're going to reopen it up to the board members. We're going to reopen it up to Mr. Rubel, Attorney Galvin. We're then going to see, you know, there may be some back and forth. We are going to open it up to the general public, and that's about it. So, Mr. Andronico, all you.
All right, so I'll let you kind of tell me. So, we, we send in the revised package, which included the, any of the engineering or design documents that were changed from the last submission, and we included a narrative response to all of the town department's comments as we had them to date, as well as the board's comments. We also included a revised traffic study, which addressed Gillen's comments, and we included the responses that needed amendment or update for the Amory comment. So, I can do one of two things. I can give you a general overview of the changes that were made, or I can go through each item on those response narratives, whichever you would prefer, or you think is the most effective or efficient.
Let me just, I want to go, I want to just continue to see who else is on, is on.
Judy Barrett, I think is on, but she's going to have to leave early, so I want to make sure you look for her.
Yeah, and she was on by phone, correct? And I think she was on by phone. Oh, Mr. Brennan, I see you here. Just going to make sure, make sure. Okay. All right, here we go. All right. I don't see Judy Barrett online. I just wanted to see if she had anything that she wanted or addressed before she had to.
She did. I spoke to her earlier tonight, Rob.
Oh, okay.
And she asked me to ask the board to basically look at the water commissioners' concerns.
Okay.
And make sure that they were addressed as a part of the meeting tonight.
Okay, and that was it? That was the only thing she really wanted?
That was one thing she specifically asked me to mention, that the board should have the applicant address.
All right, Mr. Andronico, can you, can you start with that, please?
Well, as far as I know, we don't have official commentary from the Water Commission. We only have official commentary from the Sewer Commission, so unless something was issued that perhaps I don't have, I don't, I'm not privy to whatever, what those concerns might be this time.
Well, all righty then. And I don't have, I don't have a copy of what the, of what the Water Department said, so.
We, I believe they issued a statement much earlier on in this process. Perhaps that's what she's referring to?
I, I think that is what it is.
Let me, um, let me pull up the latest doc, the last document that we received. And I have that relatively at the ready. So, the last, the last letter that we received from the Water Department was dated July 30th, 2020. So, if you'll, would you like me to bring it up onto the screen?
If you can, yes.
Share my screen? Yeah, let me do that for you right now. If I can just remember how. Let me see, I might have to be allowed, because it doesn't look like it's an op, oh, here we go. Let me just make sure I select the correct screen. All right, can everyone hear me all right still?
Yes.
Looks like I've been muted.
Who muted you? There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
I got you.
Yeah, I, for some reason, it seems like I can't share my screen. As soon as I do that, it says you have been muted. So perhaps whoever's controlling the meeting that has to then unmute me if I share.
Who is, who's here control, who's here from WRPS?
Nothing's muted. We heard him speaking when he added up.
Yeah, I did, I did too.
Oh, all right. Forgive me. I will do that again then.
Right.
It just flashed on my screen, said you are muted, so I guess not. All right, so I, I'm going to reread this. I haven't read it in quite some time, so, okay, so if anyone works, just allow me a moment to just scan this.
Bro is muted now.
I'm, I'm talking to myself.
Oh, there we go.
I'm, I'm moving my mouth and I'll say anything.
Yes.
Okay, so basically, the, the nut of this, as I read it, is that they want some, some assurance that in the event of some kind of a construction mishap, that we have the proper, um, the proper kind of precautions in place to avoid contamination of the water supply. So to that, I would, I would, I guess I would just reference our site management plan and our drainage report and our, as well as our construction management plan, which were all previously submitted. So I think they address all those concerns.
Okay.
But there was nothing specific other than, I think they just want to assure that we're not going to contaminate with some kind of oil spill or chemical spill, which would, would, would be a part of our construction management plan, even without this commentary.
Right. Rob, Mr. Attorney Galvin?
Yes, it, it looked to me like the Abington Rockland Joint Water Works wanted to actually have a meeting with them.
Yeah, so we've been in communication with them, and perhaps Ernesto or Walter, you, you might have a little bit more information, or we less, still with those, but we've been in communication with them. We've had a little trouble getting an audience with them, but we have made several attempts to set up a meeting, just as we've done with the fire department and the Sewer Commission and so on.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
And who is that?
Ernesto Caparora.
Ernesto, how you doing, sir?
How are you?
What can we do?
I actually spoke with Joe, Mr. Joe Point this afternoon, the superintendent at the water company. So he's still waiting for the commissioner to schedule a hearing, a meeting. So far, since COVID, they had not had a meeting, nobody, virtual, physical. Open, yeah, it's open to do that in January. However, he told me, you know, I could share with, with the board tonight, with the ZBA, that he, the, the Water Department engineers working on sizing the, the pipes, the water pipes that will be necessary for, for this project. He confirmed that under any event, they will provide the fire service for the project, and the preference is to also provide the hookups to the Water Department system. So in the sense that, you know, the, the, the project's looking for alternative of private wells, use the fire service from the town, from the water company, sorry, and the water wells, in the event they cannot, the water company cannot provide the, the necessary capacity. However, he thinks, you know, wants to start drilling the new wells that should have the capacity necessary. So a suggestion is that, you know, he will suggest to the commissioners, once they will schedule a meeting, to, you know, approve the hookups for this project, subject to them having, you know, the water capacity available with the new wells being ready, which should, you know, easily happen prior to the building, building permits.
I appreciate that. Do you have that in writing?
No, it was this afternoon. I asked, I asked him that the, you know, he will probably, if it could do a lot, he could do a lot.
Yeah, he's going to have to provide, he's going to have to provide something. It sounds good, but he's going to have to provide something to us.
Absolutely. Mentioned to him, he has no problem. Actually, he requests that we meet with him, probably the week between Christmas and New Year's.
Okay.
What would be tells and the fees and the hookups and all that.
Mr. Andronico, are you going to have, is that going to be an issue?
No, no, in fact, we're, we eagerly await that opportunity to sit, to sit with them. We've been working on it for a while, but as Ernesto mentioned, they just hadn't been meeting, so.
No, it's understood.
We eagerly await that opportunity.
What I wanted to. Who is this?
Baker Junior.
Mr. Baker Junior, what's going on, sir?
Yeah, just, it seemed like the, the letter from July that was cited wasn't dealing so much with hookups as it was for potential contamination. So I'm assuming since nothing has occurred as far as a meeting with the, the water folks, then we have nothing from them saying that their concerns have been allayed.
No, we have.
Okay.
So we're going to have to get, again, once that meeting takes place, we're going to have to get that, that's kind of going to have to get taken care of. I want to go to Mr. Brennan. I'm putting you on the spot, sir. What do you, what do you get to say tonight?
As far as the water supply?
No, as far as anything at this point, and you, 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 I think you've reviewed this better than anybody else on the board at this point. So, what are your thoughts?
Well, yeah, I, I didn't know if you're going to, Mr. Andronico, kind of go through it, but I, just off the top, I did, you know, they submitted this via email last Wednesday. So I've had a couple of days to look at it, not, not in a lot of depth, but I did go through the revised plans, the response letters and so forth. The, the major changes that, as I see it to the plans are, if you recall in the last meeting, they showed some conceptual parking, additional parking down near the Wilson Street property. And they, they have that on these, on this new set of plans. So I think their, their total parking is up to 445, 446, something to, to that effect. What they've, what they've continued to say in regards to the pedestrian access out to Pond Street was that they, they feel it would be unsafe to construct the sidewalk out to Pond Street due to the conditions of Pond Street currently without a sidewalk out there. However, what they've done on the revised plans is show a five-foot wide strip as a potential future sidewalk, is how it's labeled on the plans, along the north side of the entrance road going out. My only concern with that, well, one of the things that that necessitated is that the, the plan sections now show that entrance causeway is 22 feet wide rather than the 24 feet wide that it was previously. It's tough to tell from the, from the sections, but it looks to me like the 22-foot wide are two 11-foot lanes plus a foot of Cape Cod berm on either side, so total pavement would be 24 feet width. My concern with what they've shown is the five-foot sidewalk is immediately adjacent to that Cape Cod berm, so there's no protection between vehicular and pedestrian traffic if that sidewalk were to be constructed. At the back of the sidewalk, there is a proposed guard rail, and then there's three feet between the back of the guard rail and the retaining walls. If, if the board were to approve the project, and one of my recommendations to the developer would be to install that guard rail between the Cape Cod berm and the proposed sidewalk, so that you have that physical barrier between vehicular and pedestrian traffic, just be a much safer situation at that point. The other, let's see.
Mr. Brennan, on that, on that point, can you tell me, from a, from a design, from a design perspective, is there a reason we have to have Cape Cod berm? Can it be a vertical face, can it be a vertical face curb and gain another foot in pavement?
They could be vertical, yeah, vertical curvings could certainly be installed instead of Cape Cod berm.
All right, so that would get, that would gain us a little bit more width on, it would gain a little bit more width on the, you know, on the, on the traveled way. And then from there, can you see why, can you see why, or is there, can you see a reason why that guard rail would be so far off that, off that wall, like three feet off of that wall?
Yeah, well, one of the main reasons why it's three feet off the wall is because the block wall that they've proposed, those blocks are about three feet in depth.
Oh, they are the big blocks.
So they go back, they go back three feet, so the retain, unless you're going to construct the retaining wall into, or the guard rail into that wall, the guard rails have to be roughly three feet off of the wall.
So if, if they were to use some sort of like, like an MBO precast with the, with the hollow blocks, they could feasibly put that retaining, that, that guard rail within that three-foot block. So it's not, because then, I know the, the MBO style isn't, it's not solid.
Right. They, they could, that, that's a, that's an option. One of, one of the other things, because these walls are so high, they need fall protection on the wall, so there is a fence along, or some type of pedestrian rail, believe it's a fence along the wall. So not only you have the guard rail, but then you have a fence along the top of the wall, just so that, you know, just to protect pedestrians, if there are people out there that don't fall off these walls.
So you're, so if this were to get, if this were to get constructed, it would, you're, basically from that car, from that curbing, it would be curbing, guard rail, walk, fence, wall.
Right.
Okay, and in, in potentially, you could push that, you could push that fence right up to the, you know, right up to a foot off the face of the wall and construct some of that, some of that sidewalk on top of that block wall, because they're so, because they're so wide. So you could even gain more width if it came down to it.
Most likely, yeah.
Okay, so there, so there's, there's potential for the, there is potential for widening, widening out access a little bit, and still, and still giving the room for a decent pavement with a sidewalk and enough fall protection and a guard rail that, that we're not limited to, or the applicant wouldn't be limited to, again, 20, only 22 feet of pavement.
I'm, yeah, I'm sure something could be done to why that.
If I might, I'd like to call on my engineer, Patrick Crimmens. Patrick, having, having heard that, do you have any thoughts on that? Does, does that scheme make sense? Are there, are there any pitfalls to that method? Not to put you on the spot, but I don't know if you have any, I mean, we probably have to study this, but.
No, absolutely, and I just, I just won, I just won this off the top of my head, so, and I could be completely off base, but being in the business, there's always, there's always ways to, you know, to make this stuff work. And I just, I look at this thinking that if we are going to do a sidewalk, we want to get, we want to give as much safety, you know, concern as we can to anybody walking down the walk.
Oh, yeah, certainly. I mean, we'd be happy to explore alternatives to, you know, there's different ways that we could align the fence, guard rail, wall. We can work with the manufacturers to see what, if there are any opportunities. The design itself, though, the 22-foot, because this is that driveway that we don't want anybody parking on, and because of the length of it, we actually felt the 22-foot width, where it's a good urban road width that will actually slow traffic down because of the narrowness.
I know, well.
Be more likely to prohibit parking on the side of it.
Okay, I just, I see it, I see it differently. I see anybody, most specifically a young professional that's late for work, is going to hammer down to get out of that as human, as quickly as humanly possible. You got a nice long straightaway into, into, while it's not a hairpin curve, it's, it's, it's just, it's something that, it's something that I would be concerned about.
So if I might, I would say that this commentary probably speaks to our original opinion that this, the condition of adding the sidewalk to this roadway creates not only a dangerous situ, condition and send them out to a busy road with no sidewalk, but also the condition that you've just described, which furthers my conviction that this just doesn't seem like a good idea for our residents. And I just, I think that, I think that the risks and the challenges outweigh the benefit of adding the sidewalk, which is why we proposed this, propose this as a potential sidewalk, and that would be if you read the narrative conditional upon approval of a sidewalk along Pond Street, at least at that point, I could see some benefit in terms of connectivity. But I, I think that what we've just talked about furthers my point that this just, this, this isn't a good idea, and to what real gain?
I, I'm not going to say I agree. I'm not going to say I disagree. I, I understand the argument, though. You know, I just, I've been thinking about this. I've been, I've been weighing it back and forth. We're going to, I, I'd like to, we're going to, we're going to table that decision for right now. We're going to, we got to talk about, there's other things we got to talk about. What I do want to, what I do want to address, let me just pull up my email here. Mr. Capriata, where are you? There you are. All right, let's, let's. Alright, let's, 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 let's go back in time a little bit. Did you have, did you have a site meeting with a number of the selectmen at the Zero Pawn Street site?
Those were prior to this development.
Yep, Brad, prior to this development. What you were talking about, you, you, you were talking about this development, were you not?
One point was this development, I mean, another development, the forty B and the last one was pertaining to the marijuana grown facility, which I, the time I enter into host community agreement with the board of selectments.
Okay, wait, um, um, let's, let's isolate down to a, to a date here. Somewhere between June and July of two thousand and eighteen? Did you, did you have a site meeting with the, with the selectman?
No, with the board of selectmen, it was with few selectments.
There was a, it was a couple of members of the selectman.
Yeah, if I remember, I don't remember the dates, I mean, it was a couple of years ago.
Okay, and there were two, there were two, there were two architects with you?
I, I can provide, I can provide all the, go back in my calendar, provide you all the information tomorrow. So you can email with all that.
I just, I, I was given some information that you had a meeting out there and the selectman basically told you that the biggest, one of their biggest concerns was that they didn't want to be able to see this from Hingham Street. And you were gonna be limited to four stories. And you agreed and said that, that really?
Yeah, no such thing, that the, the concern was never Hingham Street, the concern's always was from the residential neighborhood. Never Hingham Street. I mean, it's still, Hingham Street, you have a big, huge parking lot of Home Depot there. I mean, I don't see, I don't see what the concern is. So I was absolutely categorically never told that. And by the way, as you know, I saw the project, I'm the leading guy here. So it's Rick Link, the project and working with David and Dronico.
Well, I under, I understand, but before you sold the project, you were told right out.
I was not, absolutely not, absolutely not. The only, the only concern was the residents, the residential neighborhood. Right, there was never any concerns about the Home Depot, the parking lot of the Home Depot. And which again, doesn't make sense, the, the, the concern about the parking lot from Home Depot. The, yeah, it was Turner Road, at the time that there was a proposed forty B development there, it was proposed three, was three-story buildings, then with four-story buildings that were proposed, not because we were told, but was, that was NRP, Natural Development Company.
Okay.
So two of the buildings were proposed in about the same location of the, the current proposed project. Another, another building was proposed to be in area that's toward Turner Street, where now is proposed to have a walk-in, walk-in trail and, you know, open space back there.
Okay, I was given some different information, sir.
Absolutely.
It is, it's, it's, I was given some different information. I just, I know that, I, I know that either way, I was given some different information, you're, you're not correct, you know, you're definitely not, you're not in agreeance with that.
Absolutely, absolutely, I'm on record with that. And I'm sure the information you were given was not by any selectments, probably somebody, a third party.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure they're coming from the horse mouth. Because it was, it was never such, and again, it was proposed a four-story, it was never told to be a four-story, but it was three buildings. But with the, the, Mr. Lincoln and David and Ron, what they doing, they proposed two, three, to preserve open space and not to, it will be, be far away, not even be visible for, for the residents of Turner Street, Turner Road, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So that, that's how this project, the current proposal end up with five stories.
No, I understand the current proposal.
Yeah, and so. And I, I, no, 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 absolutely nothing saying the decisions that the team, Mr. Lincoln's team is making.
So, alright, I wanted to bring this up, it was good, again, I.
Absolutely, again, I'll be, I'll be glad to go back in my notes and give you all the details, times and dates and who I met with, who I spoke with, what the conversation were. And those conversations took place in the presence of representatives of NRP, so. Now we got to get an amendment from them.
Alright, and vice versa, I'll do the same. Alright, the other issue that I saw based on the new site plans, let me just bring it back up here, I went to, alright. There's a couple, there's a couple of things. The, the expanded parking onto Wilson Street. And I'm gonna have to, I'll probably have to look at, look for some opinion from Attorney Galvin on this. That expanded parking, would that have to be, we would have to, that would have to be, you know, and it's residential. We don't allow parking in a residential, so that's, that's something that we'd have to kind of go against what we already, you know, what we already frowned upon.
So what, you're asking me whether they can propose it there?
Yeah, because and it's, that's going against everything that, that we've always said in a residential.
They can ask for a waiver, is conference a permit process, they could make that pitch, sure.
Okay, so that.
With all due respect, we've been showing that parking there for over a month now.
Yep. Well, it was, it was kind of a draft, you know, you were talking about it, now, and now we see it and it's, I'm just making sure we're covering all bases here, because that is, we frown upon that in the town, you know, as a, you know, a parking lot in a residential zone. It's not allowed, I mean, we don't allow that, but you know, things, things are changing. I did see the, I did see the, the memo from the, it was the title research company that said that you guys do have the right to basically take over that section of Cedar Street. I saw that saying that, that answered that question. Other than that, I don't wanna take up too, I don't wanna take up too much of the talking time, so I, and I'm just gonna open it back up to the board. Who's the first one that I see? Let me see, Mr. Baker, not Mr. Baker Jr., I see you raising your hand, but I wanna start with the board members themselves, or at least the voting members. Mr. Baker, did you have any questions at this point of the applicant?
The only thing I'd like to see is the curb on that side. The Home Depot side going out, raised curb instead of a berm. Cars can drive right up on the berm and park. A curb and they can't.
Yep.
That eliminates anybody parking on that causeway.
So rather than, so rather than a Cape Cod berm, you want some sort of vertical curbing?
Yes.
Okay, you got anything else?
Do you want me to respond to that, or we just gonna go around?
Oh, if you, if, if you can, please.
Yeah, I just wanna talk, so I just wanna talk about, so per, per the narrative, what we're committing to do is, is installing a sidewalk, if and when sidewalk down Pawn Street should be approved and executed. And, and also in that narrative, we talk about, you know, we're willing to commit to, to assist in that effort and put our weight behind the pursuit of that project. And I think that, I think that our project would, you know, would, would put, would add some, some, some weight behind that argument. So I think that any agreement that we're, we're, that we're willing to make in terms of the sidewalk, I would, I would ask that it would be an element to an approval, should there be one today, with the understanding that the design and structure and the specifics of that curb and sidewalk would be worked out at a later date as so it to be coordinated with the sidewalk that would be proposed on Pawn Street. So rather than specify the actual construction of this curb and sidewalk.
Well, it's not the sidewalk, he's not talking about the sidewalk, he is only talking about the, the cur, the, the curbing adjacent to the roadway.
Are we, are we talking along the causeway here?
Yeah, along.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, I would say that that's integral to the sidewalk, so, you know, or as a part of that assembly. So I would say that, so that I would say that, 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 that the specifications of how that assembly is constructed would probably be something we would have to revisit upon approval of a sidewalk. I mean, we can, we can commit all day, but I have the feeling that the conditions would change once we got to that point. And I don't wanna, I, I would hate to have it tied to this approval, and then we have to make an amendment, and I just feel like it's, it could potentially become complicated. Unless you really need to see a detail, but I just, I know how this goes and how the, the condition of how it meets the road and the sidewalk there and the curbing there, it just, it could be problematic if we commit to something specific now. However, we can commit, oh, go ahead, Derek.
Sorry, so, yeah, it is currently shown as Cape Cod berm, that's because sidewalk wouldn't be constructed. The detail that's in the detail sheets, it's a monolithic sidewalk, it's a sidewalk with monolithic curb, so it'd all be poured as one with a vertical face. So the Cape Cod berm would have to be cut out for the sidewalk to be poured. Alright, well, on the, and on the flip side, on the flip side of that, Mr. Brennan made a suggestion that the guard rail should actually go between the curbing and the sidewalk. And if that sidewalk were to go in, I would, I would wholeheartedly agree with him. So that would kind, it wouldn't, it wouldn't negate a monolithic pour, but it definitely would require some sort of separation. It would be easier to do some sort of separation between the back of the curb and the face of the walk, you know, with a, some sort of grass strip, as opposed to a monolithic pour. So it's, I can hear where Mr. Andronicos said, I, I can hear Mr. Andronicos' argument when it comes to that because of the monolithic pour. Mr. Baker, I think we need to, I think we need to listen to the applicant at this point, only because, only because. Mr. Baker, do you have anything else you need to, you wanna address?
The only other thing is the thing that you brought up about the parking in the residential.
It's, again, it's, it's all part of the say, and Mr. Attorney Galvin is correct, it's all a part of the, the, the special permit or the comprehensive permit. It, it is something that we do not allow. We've not allowed this in town ever, as far as I know, but as a part of the comprehensive permit, they have the ability to ask for this. So again, we kinda we kinda have to look at it that way.
And I would, I would say that there's considerable benefit to it. I mean, I know that earlier on, you know, we, we all agreed that there was some parking challenges.
Yeah.
You think this really, this solves it in a big way. We were able to commit to the parking per unit recommendation that you made, and it allows us, you know, five percent designated parking for guests, which would be ten, twenty-two parking spaces minimum. So it does solve a lot of the problems that we've all talked about. So we do think there's a lot of benefit to this strategy.
No, I, again, I agree with that, I do agree with that, because you did the, you upped the parking count from, from the one, it was like the one point two-five to one per, say it again, it was one per one bedroom and studio?
Yep, yep, and then two, and then two per two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
Yep, and then, and three for three bedrooms. And that, and then assigning, I'm gonna pull up my narrative here, that, that allows, that gives us about a hundred extra spaces. So not only does that allow us plenty for guest parking, but it also allows us some flexibility in some of the one bedrooms. Because to, to, you know, to the, some, to the commentary from our last meeting, we may have some one-bedroom units that have two cars. This allows us plenty of flexibility in those situations without sacrificing any guest parking at all.
And then if we were to, if we were to allow this, there would be appropriate screening, most specifically to, I guess it's to the east, to the residential house that's right there?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, alright.
And I think you, I think you can see it on, on the, on the landscaping plan.
Uh, let's see, Mr. Baker, you, you good at this point?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Let's see, who's next? Mr. Mr. Tansy, where are you?
Right here.
There you go. Do you have the, do you have any questions or comments for the, for the applicant?
I have, I've got some questions for, for Pat with respect to the expanded parking area. I'm looking at the plan and it appears that it's within the buffer zone to the vernal pool. Has, is that an issue? And if so, has it been resolved? And Pat, have you got, got it, did you get a chance to analyze the runoff of this area of the parking lot and its various impacts? That, that, that's, that's one question.
Yes, so I, I did look at the vernal pool situation. It is within the hundred-foot buffer, it's not within what's specified as the vernal pool habitat, which is the vernal pool itself plus any regulated wetlands within that hundred-foot buffer. So if you look at the plans, there's two lines showing around those vernal pools, one is a vernal pool line, the other's a wetland line. So anything inside that wetland line is considered vernal pool habitat and it's, it's, it's protected just like the vernal pool is. The hundred-foot buffer to the vernal pool is still important to the Wetland Protection Act. It's my understanding that they were also going to the Conservation Commission tonight for the first hearing on this. I've been in contact with Henry Nova, who does a lot of the engineering review for the Conservation Commission. So he and I have had some conversations back and forth about the drainage as well as the vernal pool issue. The drainage, I, I did look at it, Greg, they are meeting the, the rates and volume for the, for the entire site, those requirements. They're also meeting the water quality volume that they need to provide as well as the total suspended solids removal requirements. The one thing that, and they're doing that, they, they have, they, what they did was they increased the size of the subsurface infiltration system in the large parking area between the buildings. That's where they get their recharge. And then they have two submerged gravel wetlands, which are treatment processes that are actually very well suited for an area that's tributary to a water supply. Because those, those types of BMPs actually, not only do they clean the stormwater of your total suspended solids and things like that, they also remove nitrogen and phosphorus. So those are the ideal best management practices for this area. The, the only, and I discussed this with Henry Nova today, on the, on the details for those gravel wetlands about soil testing during construction, about the permeability of the soil, and if it's, if it's found to be too permeable, that the gravel wetland should be lined to prevent any infiltration through them. I would, and I was going to make this in a comment in a, in a, in a letter when I had time to put one together. I would recommend that the gravel wetlands just be specified, specify that they be sealed in the construction drawing so that, you know, we don't have to rely on a soil test during construction. We can just say, okay, yeah, they're gonna be sealed. That way, the gravel wetlands are, are not impacting, adversely impacting the wetlands or the vernal pools.
Okay, so Pat, the, the one hundred-foot buffer, is that, are you saying that that's a local reg or a state reg around the? It was my understanding that the Wetlands Protection Act has a one hundred-foot no, no-touch buffer around the vernal pool. Is that, is that not correct? Am I not understanding that properly?
Yeah, it, it's not, it's not a complete one hundred-touch, no, one hundred-foot no touch, no-touch buffer. As I mentioned, it, it only is insofar as this boarding vegetative wetlands located within that buffer. So typically, when you have a vernal pool, it's located in a wetland somewhere. So let's just say you have the vernal pool, then the wetlands surrounding the vernal pool, just for round numbers, goes fifty feet out from that vernal pool. The only portion of that hundred-foot buffer of the vernal pool that would be regulated under the Wetland Protection Act is that portion that's within the. regulated under the Wetland Protection Act is that portion that's within the wetland. So it's only that first fifty feet. Then, then you had the, the rest of that hundred foot buffer is not regulated, what they call vernal pool habitat. That's what is defined in the Wetland Protection Act. Um, I can provide, I have, um, I have a document here, um, that explains that, that I can forward to Greg and, uh, actually Rob and, and everybody so they have that, um, so you can understand what that habitat, what the limits of that habitat are, but, um, I mean, buffer zones are still regulated by the Wetland Protection Act. Uh, your local bylaws actually say that the buffer zone is a resource area. So according to your local bylaw, um, the, the one hundred foot buffer is, is a resource area. However, as we've mentioned in past hearings, um, that bylaw was, was passed, um, within the last year and there haven't been any rules and regulations promulgated for that. So there's no, uh, performance standards for that set what needs to be done for that, um, for that resource area.
But it still does call out the hundred foot buffer as resource area.
Correct. That's under, under the state, uh, uh, under the local, right?
Under the local and that's why, and, and we're, we're kind of the ones that, uh, we are the ones that are, uh, that are regulating that. That's a part of it, that's a part of our, that's a part of our purview with this, the local, the local wetland bylaw. Okay, what else you got, Mr. Tansy?
Um, I, I do have a, a question for Ms. Barrett. Um, Judy, uh, can you hear me, Judy?
Yes, I can.
The, the la- at the last meeting, um, there were some discussions about uh, limiting the, the buildings to four floors and, uh, pro formas. And, uh, what I saw in the packet was, I, I guess that under example, um, exhibit one, there was a spreadsheet, uh, that called itself a, a financial analysis. In your opinion, does that qualify as a, a pro former for a project this size? Um, and has it been reviewed by, um, a, a, a third party and, uh, you know, and unbiased, um, uh, third party? Do you know the document that, that I'm, are you, that I'm talking about? Did you get, get a chance to review that?
I have not had a chance to review it. I mean, I got things for the meeting, I, but I'm aware that this is in there, so let me just cut to the chase. The applicant has submitted a, a, a financial perspective on the project. The board is entitled to have that reviewed by an independent party at the applicant's expense. Um, in order to then advise you about whether the applicant's representation is correct, for lack of a better way of explaining it. Um, and so if the board is concerned at all about that financial review, you know, then you should definitely have it peer reviewed. Uh, but, but, you know, I, I, I haven't had it long enough to even arrange that and I didn't know if you wanted to do that, so I have not lined that up. Uh, but I can, or, or Attorney Galvin can, one of us can. There are certainly people who can do that kind of review available. And I would encourage you.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I, I think that would be, um, a wise choice because uh, this is a, a very high impact, uh, project visually. You know, we've got abiding citizens, um, in, in this area that are gonna feel the brunt of the, of the traffic. And, um, there was some question as to whether or not this project should have been limited to uh, four floors. My, my feeling was that, um, there aren't any other buildings higher than four floors in the town. And I, I feel that we should limit it to four floors. And I think there's a lot of, um, livability issues that has been brought up in, in other, um, meetings that I think could go a long way to adding safety, livability, limiting the impacts to the abiding citizens and limiting the impacts on our existing water and sewer systems. So I, I have concerns for that. I would like to see, um, you know, if, if this, if a project this size really has to have five floors. Because, um, I've, I've called the, I've, you know, called it into question.
So if I may, I, I can say that we are, we are ready and, and willing to provide any documentation and some further detail on the pro forma and how we reach these financial conclusions. So, you know, we, we, we anticipated some further review, so we're ready to do that. So I just asked that the town send us some kind of official request, um, with the specifics of what you'd need to see and, and we're ready to do that.
Mr. Galvin, can you put that, or actually, or Judy, will you guys, will you be able to do that?
Yeah, we can, we certainly can do that. Um, I mean, Bob, Bob knows a consultant, I do, um, it's fine. And, and I would encourage you to do it. I mean, so what ultimately it will happen is someone will review the pro forma and, and come back to you and either say, you know, the applicant's correct, uh, if you reduce it to four floors, if you make these other changes, it will make the project uneconomic. Or the cons, or the consultant will say, actually, no, we think the applicant can make some of these changes. And, um, you know, it's gonna then come to the board to decide, um, do you want to reduce it to four, four stories or not, four stories or not, even if doing so would make it uneconomic? And there's a, for a way you have to kind of reason through that, that has to do with balancing those local needs. I talked about way back in that training, public health, public safety, environmental impact design and so forth, with the regional need for affordable housing. That becomes the balancing test, but, but to get there, you sort of need that consultate financial consultant first, so I, I can make that arrangement, or Bob can.
Yeah, Rob, could I jump in?
Yeah, please.
So I concur with Judy, uh, completely that the pro forma that we've been given here should be reviewed. In general, um, when you're talking about a rental project, like this would be a return on total cost analysis is done. And the D H C D and the Housing Appeals Committee have guidances to what makes a project economic or not economic. And, uh, I, I know how to perform the analysis, but I'm not an expert in, on the economics of a project. I think we have to look at the project as proposed and that we have to look at the project as reduced and determine whether the project as proposed was economic or uneconomic. Cause believe it or not, some developers propose projects that are uneconomic. And if you add a condition that makes it more uneconomic, um, you know, it has a bearing on how the Housing Appeals Committee might look at it. In an appellate situation, so, um, Judy and I, uh, actually talked about a name, I think even earlier or, or, you know, recently. So, um, what we would do is get a proposal together, uh, from that consultant and get that right over to Mr. Andronicos and have him take a look at it, but you definitely need a financial expert.
Understood, um.
If I might add one last note.
Please do.
Not to be adversarial, but just as a matter of precedence, I, I would like to point out that nine twenty-nine Hingham Street is a five-story building. So contrary to the previous comment.
Let's look that up, nine twenty-nine, you said?
That's correct.
The hotel out back.
Hold up if you'd like me to share it.
See what we got here. And the hotel. And where is my street viewer? See if we can see that.
The double tree.
Yeah, pulling it up right now, uh, or at least pulling up the street viewer to see if I can, see if I can catch that. Slow internet tonight.
Well, while you're doing that, we need a boat to send this to the, um, have a review of the uh, financial analysis.
I would think so, Ms. Attorney Galvin.
Uh, well, yes, I think you would want to ask us to do it, but I think you'd also kind of want us to delegate this so that we could get this done before the next meeting.
Bless you.
Thank you. How about I get in the audience?
Uh, one, two, three, four, look at that fifth story. One, two, three, fourth with the tilted windows, five stories. Mr. Andronicos, you are a hundred percent correct.
Sure am glad, because that would have been a hell of a statement to make if I was wrong.
Alright. Alright, so, uh, Mr. Tansy, so corrected.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, Mr. Tansy, so corrected. We do have a five-story building in town.
We have one?
It's a hotel.
Yeah, in a hotel district.
In a hotel district.
It's not in the residential district, it's in a hotel.
So that, I, that does have to, that does have to be odd stated, Mr. Andronicos also, it is in a completely different zone.
That's fine, it was just that, you know, the claim was there are no five-story buildings in, in the entire town. I just wanted to make.
Exactly, so and it's just the.
Chairman, the chairman.
Mr. Capriata.
Thank you. Uh, the zone is the same, the hotel's H1, uh, this site here is H1. The zone is same for both properties and the two properties adjacent to each other.
Mr. Brennan, can we confirm that? It's been so long since I looked at it.
Sorry, what was the, what was the question again?
Confirm the zone that we're in at this point. One fifty-two is residential, I know that.
Correct.
I didn't think this was the H1. I know it was the, I know it was industrial, I didn't think it was H1. Nothing's telling me that it is. I gotta look it up. I'm looking at, uh, and I'm looking up the, I got the zoning map here, I'm looking it up, I'm just double checking. Yeah, it's, uh, it's, uh, it is. Yeah, let me just zoom in just to be safe. Yeah, this is also, uh, it's the I, it's the H2 and the I1, um, so we could do another marijuana facility here too if we wanted.
We'll go on the fifth floor.
Nice, nice. Alright, so even at that, it's still in, it's also in the same district. As a, uh, it is also in the same district, so. Uh, alright, so that answers that question, um. We were dealing with Mr. Tansy. Mr. Tansy, do you have anything else that you would like to add or get answers to?
I also want to reiterate the need for the sidewalk along the access road, the causeway. And it's a seven hundred foot, um, uh, access road. And you know, guardrails can be installed on the exterior on, of these, um, uh, retaining walls, they can be installed on the interior side. I, things can be engineered, um, I, I just think it is, um, an absolute must. I mean, they have acquiesced absolutely nothing on a project on a forty B of this size. It has significant impact to the local abutters. It can be seen from Hingham Street. It is very, very visually, um, impacting and, um, you know, unless, unless it's uneconomic for, for four floors for, you know, and they absolutely have five floors, I'm gonna push for four floors because, um, the visual impact, uh, the impact on the abutters and I, and I do feel for the abutters that are in that area and we have to do, we have to fight for them to some degree. Uh, I know that we can't just cut blank, approve or disapprove. And I'm not advocating that, and I'm not advocating killing a project, but I am advocating making something as best that it possibly can. And I think we would be remiss as a board not to challenge this five floors. And I don't really, not concerned with the developers saying about five floors or a hotel or zoning district. If it's, if it's economic, if it's economically feasible to bring this project uh, down to scale and to offer, you know, some relief who are citizens who are obviously going to have a lot be impacted by this. I think we at least owe it to our town to do our due diligence, and that's, that's what I'm saying.
If I may.
Mr. Andronicos, please.
If I may, I, I would argue that to say that we have acquiesced to nothing is not a fair statement. We've added a considerable amount of open space and recreational space. Additionally, we've added, uh, access around all of the buildings which resulted in additional retained, retaining walls which come at a premium. We've committed to installing a sidewalk if and when a sidewalk on Pond Street should be installed because it is our true belief, believe me, it's not the cost of the sidewalk. It's from an operational standpoint and a safety standpoint, that we don't feel that it's appropriate to send folks down that sidewalk onto a busy street with not even a bike lane. So we've made some commitments here. I think that we've responded to all of the comments. We've studied the four, the, the four-story, um, scenario very hard and came to the conclusion that we've represented in the package. Um, and I think that you will find that upon further financial review, um, you know, once we, once we get that official request and we send it to a third party. So to say that we've not acquies- acquiesced to anything, I think we've worked very hard. And I do believe that we have put to, put forward the best project that we possibly could in a manner that, that, um, that is economically feasible and constructible, so.
Mr. Chairman, what they have offered, what they have offered is what is the minimum that's required. And I don't consider that as acquiescing. Uh, I've dealt with a lot of forty Bs, um, and we are a very proactive town. You, you know, if they tried to do this and hang them, they'd be run out of the, you know, e- every lawyer in the town would be fighting it. But to, um, say that they've done the, the minimum when they didn't even initiate giving us the minimum and saying that they've acquiesced, I disagree with that statement.
What is it that you're considering the minimum? And I'm not saying this to be adversarial, I, I truly want to understand what, what we didn't meet. I'm, I'm not exactly sure what, what you mean.
Well.
I want to make sure I capture.
Several meetings ago, we had a consultant and Ms. Barrett brought the consultant in and he very humbly made, uh, comments about the livability of the project, about having a parking lot and cars pulling straight into, um, where, where people live in their living space. And he was just dismissed. And he was just dismissed and he was almost. Laughed at for, for his, his comments. And I think that. He, he had some valid points and he, he wasn't, he wasn't even received.
But that's not true. We responded with a very lengthy response and took some serious consideration in every comment that he made. And in fact, even included the comment about site articulation in the financial study that you'll see there. So there, there was, no one was laughed out of the room and no one's comments were not heard. Um, we took great consideration of responding to, um, the peer reviewers comments.
With, with that said, I just want, I want the performer reviewed and we'll come back. We'll revisit it. And that's just us doing our due diligence. This is our job.
And we certainly understand that and we're happy to accommodate that effort and we're fully prepared.
So moved. Uh, Mr. Tansy, do you have anything else you need to, uh?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, that's, that, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Tansy. I appreciate that. Mr. Hands, you're all muted. I'm going to you now, sir.
Alright, I'll unmute myself. Um, but cross off the things we've already talked about that I was going to ask about. Um, so fast first question, um, have either the police? Or fire department looked at the partial. Access around the buildings. Uh, it's in the, it's in this new submittal. What are the comments? What do we know so far? Unofficially or officially?
I can respond to that directly, actually, as a matter of fact. So prior, unfortunately, post submission of this latest package. But prior to this hearing, um, we had a follow-up meeting with the fire department in which we, in, at which time we walked through the entire set. With, with, uh, the deputy chief and the chief. Um, and marked up a set which captured a few additional comments that they had, which were some additional paving markings. And it's some additional signage. And they responded with an email that I can pull up on my screen if you would like. And I also put this in the Dropbox. Um, so I will share my screen just so you have a chance to read that. And the only reason this wasn't submitted as a part of the park package was because it was, um. We, we had this correspondence after we had submitted it. So I can read this, um, if you'd like. This is from Deputy Chief Haney. Following up on our conversation earlier today, Rockland Fire has no additional concerns with the parking lot markings and layout. As, uh, as it is configured. Um, and then this second line was just related to a conversation we had. I'll read it anyway. I did some research into the BPDA and you are correct that the evaluation should take place when the building is 50% enclosed. That is just the testing for a BDA system. So not necessarily relevant to this discussion. That was just a one-off construction discussion. Um, but just to add some clarity to that second sentence.
I remember seeing something else. There was a, uh, there, there was a, there was talk of, it was a dedicated conduit line?
Yes, and that has been included in the set.
Okay.
Alright. So I, I will, I will show you this as well. This is what we reviewed with them. All the, all the comments in yellow are the changes that we made and they are included in the package that you have. And these additional green markings were just a few pavement markings, um, and hash marks, which we will incorporate in our final set. But this was reviewed by the fire department and this is the set that they are commenting on. And we captured the rest of their costs, their, our concerns as well.
And the police department, have they commented? They also were looking for a drive around.
Yeah, the police department. So if you look at the narrative, we responded to the police department's comments as well. Um, a lot of their commentary was picked up in, in kind of other sections. So I've referred to the responses to other sections. But as for a 360-degree drive around each building, it, it just, that would, that would result in a complete reconfiguration of the site. Um, and it would, it would restrict the parking, which would then restrict the units within, but it would also make the project unfeasible. And to conduct that study would be to design a completely different project from scratch. And that exercise just doesn't.
They responded to this. Their, their concern is still, they were asking for that access.
Yes, and in this package that we just sent you, we responded to their comment.
Have they responded? Are they satisfied?
No, no one has responded. We just sent this to you in preparation for this meeting.
Sorry, you said the fire department, you had a chance to review this with the fire department.
Yeah, and that was the email that I just showed you. And yes, they are satisfied and per this email.
So they have reviewed it, but.
I thought you, I thought you meant the police department, forgive me.
I do. You were saying that no one has reviewed it, but you said the fire department has. So I'm asking, has the police department?
Are they, you, you would have to tell me that. So typically what we do is we submit a package to you and they receive it at the same time that you have. So we've not received any comments back from anyone aside from the fire department.
Okay.
We have responded to the police department's comments. We made sure that we addressed them directly. So they weren't just sifting through drawings. They could refer to their specific comment and then see our specific response. Just to, for ease of transfer of information.
Great. Uh, moving on, I, I. The next thing I'm concerned about is, um, the lack of recreation for children and families. Uh, playground space, uh, place to ride bikes. There's a lot of adult. Uh, there's a lot of adult recreation that you've added. Can you talk about, um, recreation for families with children?
Sure. So if you take a look at the set, we've added a basketball court, which is pretty kid-friendly. It certainly was to me when I was a kid. Um, we've also added a walking path. As a matter of fact, I'll pull up my narrative. If you take a look at the narrative, it describes exactly what we've added. Um, so we've added a walking path at the south end of the development and it's a, it's approximately a thousand feet long. And that leads it on to a nature area with pit, with, with seating and open space. We've added the basketball court, as I've mentioned. We have, uh, a dog run near the bar building, outdoor lounge. Um, behind the amenity building and what we call it an outdoor plaza seating area, which is a picnic area. So I would say that's all pretty fr- family-friendly outdoor space. I, I don't know. If there's something specific you had in mind, I'm certainly.
Well, I would say that, um, in, I would say kids look more for jungle gyms. Swing sets, uh, enclosed areas that are fenced in, uh, where, these are for younger children. Uh, so, uh, basketball court for six-year-old, uh.
I guess I would say.
Just wonder how you were imagining that.
Well, we've done our best to respond to your previous comments and, and forgive me, but it seems like the bar keeps moving. You know, specifically a basketball court was asked for, and we had this discussion about open trail and walking path. To, to now find space for a playground and it's. I, I just, I find that at some point, there needs to be some acceptance that this is open space and not every community. An apartment complex has a playground. We've made considerable effort to fit in a basketball court and a nature path and a park and seating areas. I think that we've made a considerable effort here to provide some open space for these folks.
Well, I, so my question still stands. It's just wondering what you've done. Is there anything there for families and children and?
The answer is yes, and we believe that the, the areas that I just described accommodate families. But there is no playground is the answer to the question. That's the question.
And, uh, lastly for, this is for my, uh, for the public as well. We've talked a lot and, uh, about the amount of fill coming in. There's been a lot of concern about. Testing and that soil and, and while you refer to information that we have in our packages. Could you describe, uh, what the process is for, for actually testing and screening the fill? So when all those trucks, uh, come in, um. How is the soil tested? Uh, could you describe that for everybody in the audience and, you know, people listening and for neighbors? How are you actually? What are those procedures?
I might turn to my engineer, um, Mr. Krimmons to speak to that. However, there is a soil management plan that was submitted. And it's, it's pretty complex and I'm not sure it's going to be so simple as to describe that on this call right now. Um, and I certainly don't have the technical expertise to really do a good job describing that. So. Patrick, not to put you on the spot, but if you have a, um, a, an easier way to describe it. Than going through the entire soils management plan, which is, you know, a hundred pages long. Is there any way that you can, you know, summarize what the strategy is? Again, I might apologize for putting you on the spot there.
I mean, I, I guess, like you described it, David, we have a detailed soils management plan that is going to. Be put in place for when the soil is brought in so that, you know, what is being brought in is clean. And, and regulated.
Well, that, that includes certificates and testing information and verification.
Yeah, and I apologize. You know, our environmental engineer, Matt Abraham, would be better suited to address this. But we have reviewed this in detail with a.
I, I would defer you to the soils management plan. That, that, that is really the best way for us to communicate what our plan is.
Well, I would like you to, I would like you to talk about it.
I can't, I can't. The answer to that question. I cannot go into that level of detail and I'm not an, uh, environmental engineer.
Alright, before we did, Pep Brennan, have you looked at this? Is this, is this something you can comment on?
Uh, I, I did look at it when they submitted it. Um, it was submitted a while ago, so it's been a little while. I, I don't have that right in front of me, but there is, um, as Mr. Andronico said, there is significant. Uh, detail in that plan. Um, and, and it does, it does comply with the state regulations on what can be brought to the site. There's testing protocols for the, for the material prior to it being loaded into trucks as well as when it arrives at the site. So there's testing protocols on both ends. And, um. I, I really can't go into much more detail right now off the top of my head, but I could certainly kind of put together a, a. Two or three paragraph summary for the board, um, if, if it would be helpful.
The reason I bring it up, this is a, this is the concern of water commissioner. Uh, this is. I would say the top concern of neighbors and people in town who aren't just abutters, but people in town. It's our water supply. So in a public hearing, it makes sense for us to have a conversation. About what that testing protocol is so people can hear it in a way that it's digestible. We've read the report and, um, but it's not for us to describe it. I think it's. For people in this hearing to understand what that is.
Yeah.
Especially since we're putting it in the zero to 25.
Right, I, I. My suggestion, and Judy can certainly chime in, um, my suggestion would be that you ask Mr. Andronico to have. His expert that prepared that plan, uh, possibly at the next, um, the next meeting to give a summary. Of, of what is included in that. Um, that way, it is presented to the board and the public in the, in the public hearing. And, you know, everybody hears the same thing.
From a basic standpoint, Pat, can we say that there will be testing prior to the soil getting to the site? And then testing once the soil is placed on the site?
I believe that's what, whatever, what it calls for in the plan. I, I believe so, yes.
That's how much I can tell.
That's correct. Yeah, if you look at page two, we, of the letter that we had included, it describes the review of soil reuse submittals. So, and as I stated, Matt Abraham from our firm would be better suited to describe this in detail. I could read this page to you if you want me to right now or.
I'm going to tell you, it's going to go, it's going to go over the head of most people here. So I just, it, it's, it is a major concern. So the, the, from a layman's perspective at this point. As the applicant, you are prepared, you are preparing to basically have this soil tested prior to it getting to the site. And then a second test performed once it gets placed on the site. Is that what, can we say that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. If we can say, if we can say that, at least it gives us. And then once we get, and then, and then again, I, I'm assuming we're going to continue this. Uh, once we, you know, once we get your, uh, your soils engineer here, he can go into a little bit more depth on it. It's still going to go over the head of most of the people that are attending, um, but at least. At least we can satisfy some people. Um, and in the end, uh, Pat Brennan's going to be reviewed. Once all, if this all goes through and construction starts, Pat's going to be looking at this the whole way through as far as I know. Is that correct, Mr. Brennan?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll, obviously I work for the board, so I'll do whatever the board asked me to do.
Yeah, saying it's in the end, he's always been our review engineer for all of this. So, you know, what it comes down to is all of this is going to have to go through him through all stages of the, all stages of construction anyway. So not only are, not only are your professionals providing information. It's also going to be checked all the way through construction by us as well. So I just, it, it, at least we can say that before, during. And after, it's all, the, the soil tests are, are going to be reviewed. Um. Mr. Hands, does that satisfy it at least for now?
Well, yeah, yeah, I think we, that it would be great to have that conversation and have people have a chance to ask questions.
And to talk. I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. And Mr. Andronico, I just, I, I, I do want to, I do want to just express my concern here. I know that we have all this information and I know, and, and, and we've all looked at it. Some of this goes over our heads as board members, as laypeople. So just to tell us to refer to this. You know, the plan and it's not, it, it's not a good way to, it's not a good way to continue. Because we need you to tell us what you, basically what you're planning. Um, and a lot of the people that are on this board, again, I've got two, I've, I've got, today I've only got two pages. Of people that are concerned about this and a lot of this stuff goes over their heads. And even if they have the information, they're not going to really understand it. That's why we look, we look to you to, to, to kind of explain. What you're trying to, you know, what you're trying to get across. And then we have our own, you know, we have our own professionals on, you know, along the way. To kind of help with that. So to, to tell us to look back at the, at the, you know, at the. Supplied documents, it's kind of.
I, I totally get it. You know, the only, the only hesitation there is that it's difficult to summarize a, a, a highly complex engineering document.
Great.
In conversational style. And I will say that, you know, we're not dodging anything. We submitted a very complete.
Oh, yeah.
Very. Plan. It's just, you know, in all truthfulness, I'm no engineer and I can't sit here and, and talk you through that plan.
Oh, so you, basically you're saying that it's going over some of your head too, just a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you think, if you think I can, I can do it all, my, everything my team does, then.
No, that's why we have teams. That's why we.
Exactly right. So we, we will work on trying to find some way to summarize that in a more digestible form.
Yeah, that's really what it comes down to. A lot of this stuff has to be a summary, uh, of what is, of what is supplied. Because it does end up going over a lot of people's heads. So it's, 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 it's good that we had that conversation. Mr. Hands, are you, uh, are you good at this point?
Uh, I have one last comment. Um, the, we had asked for some percentages. Uh, on the wetlands, we got some numbers, um, as.
So, our impact plan, let me pull that up.
I can, if, if you'd like, I can, I can speak to that.
I did, I did some quick math on it, but it looked like we were, we're running, we're about 50%. And about 13% uh, is in the zero to. Uh, in the zero to 25. And I just wanted to.
Exactly. So, yeah, yeah, the, the disturbance in the zero to 25 foot buffer is. Seventy-two thousand seven hundred thirty-three square feet, which is about 13% of the upland area. Um, the total. The total buffer zone disturbance, both pervious and impervious. Is almost 270,000 square feet, about 6.2 acres, and that's about 48.3% of the upland area of the site. I, I did work those numbers just so I had them. The upland area of the site. Um, is also 43% of the total land area. The majority of the site is actually wetland, as you know, everybody knows.
Okay, good. That's a, that tribes with the numbers I saw. That's it for me.
Alright, and I just out of curiosity, oh no, I was just going to ask. All right, and I just out of curiosity, oh no, I was just gonna ask a question, but I see you right here. I answered my own question. Mr. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Haines, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Baker, the OG, talk to me. Mr. Baker, yeah, no, not junior. You're, you're voting on this one.
Okay. I have a tendency to agree with Greg about the four stories and the sidewalk. It just goes with what. We've done in the past with residential units. As far as the apartment buildings go. The. Other thing is. Is there a ten-foot buffer? Between the parking lot and the lot lines at the Wilson Street property?
I believe there is. But Patrick, can, can you confirm?
Yeah, I'm working on the exact dimensions right now. Sorry.
And quite honestly, if there's not, it's a part of the special permit. It's a part of the comprehensive permit. They can ask for relief on that. Just say, just so we can, you know, just so we were clear on that. It would be nice as a part of our, as a part of our zoning, it is. Uh, it's required that you get it, that you give a ten-foot, uh, landscape buffer. Mr. Brennan?
From that new parking area to any of the budding residential properties, the ten-foot buffer is there.
Is there? Okay.
Okay. The other thing is, people are asking about the. Water and sewer connections. It is a question that we can ask, but it's not up to us to decide if they get water and sewer. It's up to the other boards. And I noticed a lot of comments coming up that, what about water? What about sewer? Those questions should be addressed to the appropriate departments.
We did. Those are included in our narrative and as a response.
I'm not, no, not from you, Dave, from the general public. They're coming up as little pop-ups.
Oh, the, 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 the general public is, is concerned about that. Is that what you're saying? I think we go, I, I think we do have letters from all of them that, that are saying, can you, can you address that? Just for the general public?
Sure. So we received a letter from the sewer commission and they prescribed some specific conditions, i.e., uh, concrete. Concrete joints and flan can, flange connections. So we responded to the, uh, sewer department's responses and we've committed to those. Conditions and we've included them in our set. As we've discussed earlier, we are awaiting an audience with the water department and it sounds like we should, it sounds like we, we will have an audience for them in January.
All right, so thus, thus far, we're good to go with sewer. That's what it sounds like.
That is correct. We, we've addressed all their comments, included them in the, in our engineering sets and responded to them in the narrative.
All right, and we're waiting for water?
Correct.
Done. Okay, does that end, does that?
That's all, well.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Appreciate that. Now we go to Mr. Baker Junior. How you doing, sir?
Doing well, thanks. And just a question, actually, to follow up on Mr. Baker's question. Mr. Andronico, looking at the letter from the sewer commission dated September twenty-ninth. The first numbered paragraph or condition. Says that the town of Rockland Sewer System essentially shall have the capacity to handle the sewage from the proposed development. Have you received confirmation from the sewer commission that that capacity can be met?
So that is something that we, that we are waiting for from the sewer commission. We, we can't make that determination. Yeah, so we can only respond to their comments, which is what we've done in, in this submittal package.
Okay.
So we, we await their, their response to our response in essence.
All right, so we're waiting to find out if sewer commission says that we actually have capacity.
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh, and, and then just another follow-up to one of Mr. Baker's comments. And while I agree entirely that, you know, the. Uh, the ability of our water service to handle this development or the sewage to handle the development as well. Is within the purview of all the boards. I think one of the things that's definitely within our purview. Is considering the fact that the proposed development is for all intents and purposes parked on top of our water supply.
So I, so I know this comment comes up a lot. And I think we've addressed it several times. So unless there is a, there, there's a specific question as to how it's going to protect it. It's difficult for me to respond to it. Um, I, I think in the last CBA hearing, I, I think Mr. Brennan commented on it, on our drainage plan. And, and, um, our, our, um. Our construction management plan. So if there are specific comments on. Our ability to protect the water supply, I, we welcome those specific questions, but. To respond to it generally, I, I just, I, I feel like we, we just.
Yeah, I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding. I wasn't asking a question. I was making an observation. But thank you.
If I might interrupt, we actually have, um, the soils engineer or the, the environmental engineer, Matt Abraham. We were able to pull him, pull him in from his, from his, from his, um, from his time off to participate. And so my, now we could probably respond better than I can to some of the questions about the soils testing. Do we want to do that now?
I don't see why not. Does anybody have a, anybody have a problem with that? We can, we can address this right now. All right, what I want to do though is our lad, our, our last board member, uh, Mr. Stephen Gally, I want to, I want to get his comments first. At least we can get everybody off the board and, and, you know, all their comments and concerns. Uh, Mr. Gally, what, uh, do you have anything, uh? To add to the conversation at this point, sir?
Um, I don't have anything to add. I just still, uh, support the concept of adding the sidewalks and I prefer. Like the, I think they called it the vertical instead of the Cape Cod berm. I feel like that's more dangerous and I feel the sidewalk is essential. It's what we'd want for the residents and it's what we'd want for Rockland.
Thank you, Mr. Gally.
Just to note, we, we do have, in, in the detail plan, as Mr. Crimmins pointed out, it would be a vertical. The, the, the Cape Cod berm would get cut out when we put the sidewalk in, so.
Just, uh, it's a little. It's a little confusing, so. Where is your, where, uh, where is your, where's your soils engineer?
Uh, Mr. Matt Abraham, he's on bottom for me.
Mr. Abraham, speak up.
How are you, sir?
There you are, sir. How you doing?
Very well. Can everybody hear me okay?
Absolutely. Thank you for joining us tonight, sir. I know, uh, the, I, I know this was kind of like not, uh, not in your wheelhouse tonight, but I do appreciate you showing up.
No problem. Happy to help. What's the, what's the easiest way? Should I just address questions or do you want me to speak a little bit about what the plan entails?
So Matt, why don't you, why don't you give an overview and just explain the testing method and the timing? So, you know. Soil comes in, we receive a certificate and then it's tested against it. Just kind of overview and then maybe fill some questions.
Sure. So essentially, I mean, there's two ways to fill a site. I mean, one way is. You know, you import soil from a sand and gravel yard and you're just assuming that they're, you know, mining clean imported soils. Second way is where we can devise our own site-specific soils management plan. Where we're soliciting soils from other known clean sites across the Commonwealth. Or even out of state potentially. So essentially what that entails. Is a, you know, ongoing development project on a clean site. Would collect soil samples from their project. And we would have a set of geotechnical and environmental parameters that we would accept. Meaning, you know, it needs to be clean, good, compactable soil that can be used for development from a geotech perspective. But then also we would have a set of environmental guidelines as well. So we would. Have a strict testing procedure for a known volume that they want to import. Usually what that entails is, you know, one suite of soil samples for every five hundred yards of material. They would collect those samples, send them to an analytical lab. We would get the data, we would review that package, which would also include sort of a site history. You know, past operations at that site, so we can ensure that it's not a. You know, uh, quote unquote purity site or a site with a known environmental history. So we know that we're getting good, controllable, um, imported soil. That's essentially, you know, the guideline. So we're going sort of above and beyond just. Trusting that the sand and gravel yard is providing good solid fill. We're, we're actually. Soliciting hard analytical data to prove that.
All right, so from a, so from a layman's perspective, again, it's been said, it's been said before that. If, basically the soil is going to be tested before it gets to the site.
Correct.
Also gonna be tested once it gets placed.
So there's. Two ways that we could do that. We have, we would have somebody on site that screens that soil as it's in place. So, you know, essentially, as the truck roll in, we're visually looking at it to make sure that it's. Clean visually, but also we would have, uh, you know, field screening methods. Instruments that we can screen real time as it's being placed. And then if there's any questions. You know, on the source or the quality of that material, we would isolate it before it's placed and compacted. We would do our own testing to ensure that it's clean.
Okay, um, the other question is, you guys will be removing, uh, unsuitable soils. Is there gonna be any kind of? Is there gonna be any kind of testing of like what's remaining? You know what I mean? So it's like, we just, we don't wanna, we wanna know what's being left. I guess that's gonna be the, the big question before any of this asked, uh, before any of this really gets put in place. You know, are we covering bad soil with good soil? You know what I mean?
So we've done a comprehensive.
I don't wanna, I, I, again, not to interrupt, we've done, I, we've gone over this and we know that you've done soil test and everything out there. But I know you're going to be removing, you're going to be removing unsuitable materials. To the extent that, I guess it's to the extent that the law says that you have to.
So there's, there's been no soil or groundwater conditions identified at the site that are regulated by Mass D E P.
Okay.
So there's no, I guess, dirty enough soil that needs to be managed under the state D E P.
Okay, so basically D E P is saying that the soil that's, that exists on site right now is suitable.
In, in, I guess indirectly. So they have a set of. Parameters that we operate under. If we trigger those parameters, we need to report them. If we don't trigger, there's no direct involvement with D E P saying, yes, it's clean enough, but they have standards that we operate on there.
Who's gonna be watching out if you trigger them? To see if you trigger them?
So our firm has a series of, uh, licensed site professionals.
Okay.
Who's, that's a, you know. Licensed professional at the highest degree in the state from an environmental perspective and, and, you know, there. It's their professional obligation to report conditions. That need to be reported.
And just for, just for the record, what company do you work for again, sir?
So the company's called Ty and Bond. It's the same company that Patrick Crimmins worked for. So we're a, a civil and environmental engineering firm.
All right. Let me think. Does that answer everybody? Does that answer the questions that have been raised thus far? Board members?
Tom's got a question.
Uh, Mr. Ruble, I can't hear you. Your voice, there you go. No, not yet.
Is the, um, known the history of the, of that site? Has there ever been a twenty-one E done on it?
Yes, so that's the, that's the reports that we provided to you.
Okay. Do we know where the testing was done on the site?
Yes.
Can I have a little drawing of that, uh, where those core areas were done?
We've provided that to the town. I can certainly provide another copy.
Okay.
That should be, that should be on file.
Okay. Thank you.
What I would ask is if you could forward another copy of that to the zoning board, I can forward it directly to Mr. Ruble. Just to, just to alleviate any searching, because at this point, we know that it's difficult to search for this stuff. So if it is possible to just forward me, you know, forward the zoning board, I can forward it to Mr. Ruble and I'll make things a little bit quicker, I guess.
Absolutely.
All right. All right.
I have one question, Rob.
Mr. Baker, go for it.
Probably goes to the, to Matt. Engineer guy, the environmental. What happens if one of the machineries breaks the hose and they have a spill? Are we gonna contain that? Drinking water?
During construction?
Yes.
Yep, so there's, I mean, that's. Common practice during construction is you have essentially a, a soils management and construction management plan that you'd operate under. So you'd have, you know, spill containment measures on site, that sort of thing. When you think of. Typical releases that occur during construction, it's a failed hydraulic hose, something like that, which is a. Pretty small. So it's, it's impacts, there's official soil that are quickly addressed with, you know, the machinery that's on site. So that soil would be separated and disposed of as needed.
I believe it's anything over five gallons has to be reported to the fire department.
So there's a series of reportable quantities for different types of fuel.
Right.
Hydraulic fuel is ten gallons.
Ten?
Yep.
I thought it was five. That's all, Rob.
All right, what, uh, anybody else on the board have any, have, have any questions for the environmental engineer?
Yeah, I, I'll ask just a follow-up on, just, uh, we talked about a certain amount of testing. Related to the certain amount of cubic yardage coming in. So in this particular site, we're looking at sixty-four thousand. Cubic yards, something like twenty-six hundred truckloads of soil. So of the twenty-six hundred truckloads, is every truckload tested? Is there a certificate that goes with every truckload, um, of the sixty-four thousand? It was a, it was a sense of. How many tests are done and reports generated for this volume of soil?
Yep, so there's essentially, to answer the first question, no, there wouldn't be testing for every truck. Trucks, depending on if it's a triaxle or a trailer, hold anywhere from. You know, call it fifteen to thirty tons, so ten to twenty yards, something like that. So the analytical testing is done usually one sample for every five hundred tons. So it's not every truck, but it is a comprehensive testing plan that is in line with D E P policies. So D E P has what's called the similar soils policy. So we're making sure that soil that's being imported matches the conditions for. Soil, um, you know, on the site to make sure that we're not, you know, quote unquote, making the site worse. So soils coming in are, are clean.
Sorry, could, could we run them, run the math again for me? I lost you at tons versus cubic yard and truckloads.
It's, it's a, I, I, I mean, roughly the numbers that you use would be one point five tons. Is one cubic yard. So you can, for, for the purposes of this, you can talk tonnage and cubic yards almost interchangeably. Just for back of the envelope calculation.
Let's say the first, let's say the, uh, a, a sample from the first truckload gets done. When's the next truckload gonna get, gonna get done? Assuming that each truck is gonna be holding about twenty yards.
Yep, so usually the, the way that it works is the, the facility that wants to import to our site. Yep, so usually the, the way that it works is the, the facility that wants to import to our site. They will essentially stockpile the material that they want. And then the testing procedures, it's, it's standard practice to collect what they call a composite sample. So you're collecting, you know, a, a piece of the pile here, a piece of the pile there, a piece of the pile there. So you're getting a represent. You know, representative sample of the material that's coming in.
Of that stockpile.
Yeah.
Material.
Yeah, so the, the, the materials accumulated, reviewed, sampled, then brought into place. And then we're looking at this, the trucks as they unload.
All right, so basically with, you know, if the stockpile area is. I don't know, let's call it sixty yards, eighty yards, whatever it is, you'll take random samples from that as it's. At, as it's, uh, moved into the, into the truck. Uh, and again, it's, it's just random samples from that stockpiled, from that stockpiled area.
Correct.
Okay.
But just from a order of magnitude, if, if there was a site out there that wanted to import. You know, sixty or eighty yards, that really wouldn't be a viable option. It would, yeah.
That would be sixty four thousand.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're looking for sites that are, you know, thousands of yards of material, and then we'd have them collect multiple. Composite samples from that stockpile.
Okay.
And again, so there. They would have their own licensed site professional collecting the samples. They would prepare the package that our licensed site professional would review. So it's, it's everybody's professional licenses that are on the line. So there's no. You know, it's, it's all in line with D E P policy.
All right, and that all get, and that will all get supplied to the town as this goes on?
Correct.
Done, okay. Uh, again, I'm asking, does anybody, does anybody else have any other questions? That pertain to, uh, the soil management plan?
Rob, just a quick thing.
Is good.
Um, all the truck deliveries will be on Pond Street only, not through residential lots.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna say it right now. I am not going to allow any construction activity to go down Wilson Street. At all.
I would like to, that's the. I would like to reiterate that, that we have never. Proposed and have made it very clear that we understand that. We have no plans to utilize Wilson Street in any way whatsoever.
And I'm gonna.
Everybody hears that. There was no, we, 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 we realize that it is completely a hundred percent off limits.
But, and.
First, I just feel like we, we talk about that every time and I.
Right.
Like, I, I promise.
And the pop ups keep coming up.
You know, no, I don't mind resent, I just wanna make sure that we, we absolutely know, we get it, we're on board a hundred percent.
Again, the, just so everybody knows, the very first condition on this would be that no construction activities. No construction access, no construction vehicles will be allowed down Wilson Street. From beginning until end. And in the end, if someone, if someone notices this. Then all they have to do is the, the, contact the, the building department. Uh, do a formal complaint and there we go. And that started, that basically started, that, that starts the ball rolling. Um, so.
Rob, you should note to the, the package also says. The timing of these twenty six hundred trucks is. Scheduled with police details outside of, you know, so, you know, it's a busy intersection, but they're scheduling them around traffic.
Oh, there's gonna have, I guarantee there's gonna have to be, there's gonna have to be a detail out there to be able to deal with this. Cause I'm not gonna, I, I'm not gonna wanna see, I don't think anybody's gonna wanna see a line of, a, a line of dump trucks. Waiting to get into Pond Street.
You know, so we, so in the narrative, we've committed to scheduling deliveries around peak hours and we've also committed to coordinating with the police department. On, based on, on their recommendation for the need for details and should they determine that one is needed, then we're fully committed to accommodating that.
And again, this is more, this is more for, this is more for the general public's knowledge. So they know that we're looking at this and they know that we're thinking about it. That's, that's really, that's why we keep bringing these things up. Um.
That's why I brought it up, Rob.
No, I understood. Mr. Haines, you got anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to close, I just wanted to finish up with Matt, um, on the testing of the trucks finally, so. Um, so we've done a little, we've done some numbers, we've tested, you know. Every so many yards from so many sites, we've got certificates, stuff arrives. You've described it as you're going to look at it. Is there any more testing? How many, like, what would we expect sample sizes to be like? Once the stuff starts rolling in, you're placing it on the site, how do you conduct? Those tests beyond the visual for the things that are arriving? So, you know, sort of, how do you? Know that the soils that you're getting from. One place that have been tested and as they're arriving, how do you make sure you're getting what you've bought? And what was tested? What happens on site? Would you describe that process for us, please?
Sure, absolutely. So there's the trucks roll in and obviously the easiest way to. Red flag anything of concern is, is visual. That's why that's sort of the first line of defense. Then we also have field screening techniques that we can use, not to get. Overly scientific, but we have field screening instruments that can detect contaminants that. Volatileize off of the soil, meaning you're gonna. In essence, smell it, like, you know, if you, if you spill gasoline, it vaporizes, you can smell it. So we'd have those sort of screening instruments, but also we have techniques where we can, you know, analyze. Real time to get a, a readout of if there's contamination in the soil. And I can go into as much detail as you want, I just don't wanna.
What you're describing is someone monitoring.
Correct.
And testing if they see or smell something that raises their concern.
We would also test the trucks as common practice. I mean, we're not, even if there's no visual evidence. You know, we would have a certain, you, you know, random screening of. A, a certain volume of trucks. I mean, it's not literally gonna be every single truck, but it's, you know, a. Random screening where you would conduct field sampling.
But keep in mind that that field testing and inspection is, is the secondary. Testing, that's the belt that's suspended. So it's not, it's, it's not just, we don't know, there's already been a series. So I just wanna make sure that's clear that.
And that, that it's coming from, I, the, the soil that's coming in. All these trucks are coming in from sites that across ten or twenty trucks. It's that in itself, a little bit of it is representative of a bigger site. It's not like you're getting a. A bit of soil from one place and a bit of soil from another place. These are big pieces of samples, a few samples. It gives you a nice cross section of any potential problem from these sites.
Correct. And just so that, just so the board can be comfortable with the plan too, and we've done this in other municipalities. I mean, it, it's not. Unique to this project. We've certainly worked, um. You know, with other municipalities designing very similar plans and, you know, they went very, very smoothly, so.
Um, the fact that our drinking water is adjacent to the site. Are there any special procedures, uh, beyond what you would normally do at another municipality or at a commercial office building or someplace? Else, are there any procedures that you've put into place for this project in particular? Because of the drinking supply that's nearby, or is there anything we should be considering?
Not from a soils in point, uh, excuse me, soils import perspective. I mean, there's, um. You know, as long as you're documenting that it's clean fill, that's. You know, what the, the management practices would be to protect the drinking water supply.
Great, thanks. Can I throw this to Judy real fast before we go? Judy, is this anything here that we should have an additional consultant or is this just, is this Pat Brennan's? Um, area? Do we want any additional review on this?
He's on mute.
Sorry, guys, I'm always trying to be so polite, I keep shutting it off. I, I don't think so, Tim. I, I would almost defer to Pat on this just because. And I'm a planner, I'm not an engineer, and I just like know my limits, so. Pat, I'm gonna pump this one to you.
I can say this before you step in, Pat, I can say this, I'd almost want an independent. Uh, I'd almost want an independent testing facility on this. I just, again, because this is so close to the, to, to the water supply. And if you, if you look at all the comments that keep popping up. It all comes down to the same thing. Everybody is, everybody's concerned about this. I'm, I know that you guys have, you, you have the, the, you have the plans in place. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tested by, before it gets there, it's gonna be tested by Ty and Bond, once it, once it gets there. Um, I'd almost, I'd almost think we should require an independent, uh, testing facility. Once the stuff gets there to, to be able to deal with this. That way, that, that way we know, you know, it's a third. It's a third line of defense on this, the, and a third license, if you will, that's on the line if something's wrong. Um, Pat, do you, do you, do you think it's overboard or overkill?
I, I don't disagree. I'm, I'm not a licensed site professional, so, uh, I, you know, I, that's, that's not my purview.
If I might, I, I would like to point out that, you know, Ty, Ty and Bond is, is not the developer. And I can guarantee you that no one in their firm is going to risk their license for me. I may be their client. But, you know, I, it's, it, I just want to bring some assurance to folks that. What, what, what they do, they take very seriously and it is their livelihood on the line. So. If I'm not testing the soil out there, that I could see people saying like, well, yeah, of course, but. I just wanna make sure that it's clear that these are licensed professionals, as Matt expressed, they're licensed on the line. Uh, reporting these conditions, so.
Oh, that's agreed. And here's, here's one thing, though, I need to, I need to, I need to basically voice a concern that I'm seeing right here.
Yeah, sure, I know, I'm just responding to it.
There cannot be enough checks when it comes to our drinking water. I don't know who said that, but, and. This is, this is our, this is our town. This is what's going into our bodies and we have to protect this as much as humanly possible. And I think that in the end, an independent to, to triple check everything. Is, is in the best, is in the, the, the best interest of the town of Rockland. Um, and it's not just the, and it's not just the residents that are around this. This is everybody.
When you say independent, what would that look like? Would that be a consultant that the town hires?
No, that would be a consultant that you guys would have to hire.
So what, so how would that be different than me hiring Ty and Bond? And honest to God, I'm not being adversarial.
I know, I understand.
I wanna understand, I wanna make sure that I get what you want me to do.
I understand. It, the, the sheer fact is, is that you hired Ty and Bond to do the engineering here. You're also hiring Ty and Bond to do the, to do the testing. I understand that they are licensed professionals and no, and. No licensed professional is going to put their license on the line for even their biggest client. But on the, on the flip side of that. I live in this town. I drank the water, regardless of what people say. I drank the water in this town. I, I need to protect, I, I need to protect myself as well as the rest of the people in this town. An independent that has nothing to do with Ty and Bond, has nothing to do with the, the. The, the, you know, the facilities where you're getting this material, you know, Landersite or something like that. Somebody else that's, that's looking out for the town.
Well, then I would say that if, but if I hire them, they'd be working for me.
I, no.
I just don't, I, and I, I'm, I'm understanding your point, but by me hiring another engineer, it's the same relationship. That Ty and Bond has to me, so.
Need to be.
Is it different?
It would need to be, it would need to be a, uh, an account that's set up. And funded. By, by the, you, the applicant. Yes, I, I know you were, I know you were trying to speak up here, so.
If I could just add something to the, the conversation, so as part of the testing that occurs, so at the origin site. So before it gets to. The site that we're, you know, in Rockland.
Mm-hmm.
A alternate licensed site professional is collecting the samples and sending it to a third party analytical service. Who's providing the data. So there is, so it's not like. One L S P is collecting it, giving it to us. There's a third party analytical certified laboratory. That's performing the actual testing. And then if, if we have any question as to what's in the material, we would then send it to an additional. Certified laboratory. So there's actually. It, it, I don't know if that helps answer your question about having another layer of protection. So it's not just. Professional engineer to professional engineer. There is a third party analytical service who's also. You know, has their certifications on the line as well.
Yeah, and Judy, I wanna speak up, so wouldn't.
Me?
Yep.
I, I guess the question, well, a couple of things went through my head. One was, if this were not a forty B, what would the town's procedure be? Um, just because that might be helpful to the board to sort of sort out what to do. You certainly can make this a condition. I'm not, believe me, I'm not arguing with you. I understand the concern about water. I don't know if the water, water department may have some comments on this as well. Um, in some communities I work in, the water department would probably be insisting on something like this, but I don't know where they're, I don't know what, I don't know what they think. But I would say, there's no reason why the board can't make something like this a condition. If, yeah, if that is going to be, uh, important to you for environmental protection purposes. The applicant would pay for it, just as the applicant's paying for peer review on this project, and the town would hire the consultant they're comfortable with. But I think the question really is like, how did, how would you handle this if there were not a forty B?
That. Thoughts?
Well, if it wasn't a forty B and it was a, you know, a site that there's been a, a twenty one E performed on. Um, I would suspect that, you know, if it was a planning board project, a definitive subdivision or something like that, that it would be. Like Judy just said, the, there, there would probably be a condition in the decision that. The, uh, the developer needs to fund, uh, a third, you know, an L S P that is retained by the board. Um, to look out for their, um, interests and the town's interests. You know, it, it's, it's not. Mr. Galvin may know better, but I, I don't think it's. You, you don't come across these sites all the time, so it's not something that I see all the time, but. Uh, I, you know, when, when it's, with an issue like this, it's that important, then I, I think it's, it's the right thing to do.
The proximity to the water supply, that's what's really driving this. Um, it's, you don't have too many.
Amount of fill.
That close to the water supply.
Listen, I don't have any, I, I, I'm not rejecting this notion, I just wanted to make sure that we work out the mechanics of the relationship.
Attorney Galvin, you were, you were speaking up.
Yes, I, I was just gonna suggest we'd probably put it as a condition on the project that. You know, a licensed site professional will be given access to the testing materials for peer review at the cost and expense of the applicant.
All right, so the, the discussion has been had, we'd, we can, we, we know that it is possible somehow, some way. We'll, 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 we'll just put that aside for now. Um, we know that, we know that, we'll talk about this once we start thinking conditions. Uh.
One other point, um, you know, I, I know we're not gonna finish tonight, obviously. And there are some outstanding issues. And I know the board has to get back to the earlier matter that we postponed until afterwards, so. Uh, I, and I know there's a lot of people here that probably wanna speak, but. You know, there's gonna be another public hearing, uh, or continued public hearing in this matter, and we're, we're gonna have more information. And if it's not too much to indulge, perhaps maybe we should. Use this as a good time to break and pick another hearing date and make sure that we all understand. and make sure that we all understand what each of us is going to be doing between now and the next hearing date.
Oh, that's a great idea. I want to make that list of things that we had, we had talked about that need to be talked about.
I, I, I made a list as we were going. So that when we got to this moment that I could do that, and I don't, look at if it's the will of the board to hear from the public. I, I don't wanna, I, I don't want to cut anybody off, but I also want everybody to know that there's gonna be another public hearing. And all we're gonna have is more information and maybe it'll answer some of the questions that people have outstanding. So the list I have was, I, I, we're looking for the board to ask Judy and I to, to locate a a financial expert that can review the pro forma and get a proposal. And I think Judy and I would like the permission to the board to engage one, provided the applicant agrees. I mean, we're gonna maybe develop one or two names and get a proposal and we'll provide the information that the applicant has provided and we'll get a proposal. If we could have that authority to get that going, I think that would help expedite that, including for the applicant. And we might even be able to have that review done before our next meeting if we're able to have that type of designation.
Board can get that permission for you right now.
Okay.
Motion.
Got a, got a motion.
Second.
Second. All, and, and again, roll call. Myself, I'm in favor. Mr. Baker?
In favor.
In favor, Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Tansey?
Yes.
Don't move. You have the permission.
Okay, the next thing I had on my list was the applicant. I think through Mr. Caparata and others indicated that they are intending to meet with the water department to confirm that the system has the capacity to provide water to the proposed development. I think we should encourage them to do that. I've actually taken the liberty of writing this to La Pointe tonight already and asking him for a status and a report back to the board. So I've done that already. My, my understanding is that we are waiting for the sewer department now maybe to confirm capacity again, that the applicant has indicated that they've responded back with some information. So I'll, I'll write to the chair and superintendent there to get a, a response to that. So that gets done. And those were the, the major issues that I saw so far.
Anybody else have any, anything they want to add to this list?
Oh, we, I mean, just to reiterate, we talked about police and fire and the access around the building.
So we, we want to confirm with the fire department and the police department that they're satisfied with the revised plans?
Yes. Particularly the, the access.
Anybody else?
Public?
Well, we didn't, we're making sure we got everything, we got everything from the board first, but if, if everybody on the board is satisfied at this point that we have enough that we can give them for the next meeting to continue, is everybody satisfied?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Parsons, you have the floor.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to tell you that in a, it's a statement is EPA is actively looking at sewer department. They have an AO from 2006 and there are severe issues of overcapacity with the sewer department. So that being said, I do want to weigh in on the soil thing because you can ask for the name of the lab that's doing the testing of the soil, the location of where the soil's coming from, all before it hits the trucks. That's a lot of soil coming in and you forgot about all the residential homes that are on Pond Street. So the entrance needs to be on Hingham Street where there are no residential homes. Otherwise you've got 2,600 trucks coming down Pond Street. And that's not good. It's all residential. There's no businesses there. And I'd like to know from the soil guy, the certain types.
Wait, let me just back up. Let me back up. You said the entrance on Hingham Street?
There, there is no entrance on Hingham. There's no access to the site from Hingham Street.
Yeah.
So you don't have an, your entrance is Wilson Street only?
No, no, on Pond Street.
What part of Pond Street? Not the part that has residential, if I'm not mistaken?
No, it's just, it's just after the Home Depot. It's just after that, that entrance on the Home Depot site.
Right. And before the curb.
Yes.
So therefore, well, there's a house, I guess, that you're gonna take. That's an entrance. Coming the other way, coming from Whiting Street and here and over down onto Pond Street. That's all residential.
I know, I, I know what you mean. I know what you mean. You're, you're, what you're saying is that the route that these trucks need to be taking should be coming from
Right.
and not up.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. Yes, yeah, agreed. So not, yes, I understand.
Okay, the other issue I have is because not all information is up on the internet and we don't have access to Town Hall because it's closed and it's gonna be closed for quite a while. So the soils, and I know the soil guy and my memory is going back 25 years, but there's different types of soil. So if he could put that information in layman's terms, if all of this can get up on the internet where under zoning board, people can find this information and not have a terribly hard time finding it, it would be very good. On your zone A, that's a resource area. That's municipal water supply. And no, you can't just infringe upon 100-foot buffer on a certified Vernal Pool. And there's two Vernal Pools there. So no, that's a waiver. And I want, what, did a public records request? I want that letter to the Conservation Commission because the Conservation Commission does not know anything about that letter that's in this waiver request.
You had said that. I, I saw your request for that. Mr. DeAndroni, Mr. Androni? What did, do, do you know what she's talking about?
I, I do not.
It's in, it's in writing in the waiver request. It's the very first waiver request and it says chapter 407 Wetlands Protection Bylaw, section 407, five permit and condition C. And then it says, see attached letter to the Conservation Commission. And yet the CONCOM doesn't know anything about it either.
Well, the CONCOM hearing is tonight. It's happening right now.
Okay.
I requested this letter beforehand. They know nothing about this letter.
Uh, well, that request didn't come to me. So I, I'm sorry. I, I didn't receive the request, so.
Can we put that, can we put this in the list of things that, that need to be satisfied for the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you for your permission, Mrs. Parsons.
Um, on that subject and, and the, and the water, because it is such an issue and can't be fooled with, you're raising up this site 13 feet and then you want five stories on top of it?
Yes.
The buildings are going up on 13 feet of fill. Am I mistaken?
No, no, that's correct.
And then you want five stories on top of that?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what, I mean, yes, I, I, I guess I'm not sure. It's, it's not, we're not.
Yeah, that, that, right. So that you have to add 13, 13 feet to the five stories. And even if you took off that fifth story, you're not losing anything financial because then your parking spaces are reduced, your number of affordable units are reduced, and it's not interfering with your profit.
That's not true. And if you review the financial analysis, we, we can prove that out and prepare to do that. It's more complicated than it may appear initially.
And that's also one of your.
As we mentioned, we're more than happy to provide whatever detail and documentation is required.
And that's why we're also going.
Good. You're gonna let us know what your profit is. But this needs to, all of it needs to be up online because we do not have access to Town, Town Hall. We would normally be able to look at all the maps and we can't do that.
It's unfortunate at this point, but the, the only way that we can do it, unfortunately, is via files that are on the, that are on the, that are on the webpage. I know that they're up there. I've got, I, I had to download them myself today. So I know it's up there. I just don't know if, I don't know when they actually got put up there. So, cause I just, I went there today. I, I've seen them in the past. I've seen them for the past couple of weeks. So I know that they've been there. But I also know that not everybody.
There's a ton of, of traffic, ton of traffic studies. I'm looking at them right now on my computer as we speak. So that's why I say that there's something, there needs to be more up there that the public can view.
We will do, I, we were, we are, we are doing our best at this point to continually update the, update the information.
Mr. Rosa, can I offer a suggestion? I have the pro forma and I'd be more than happy to share that with Ms. Parsons. And I'll find the soil data and I will share that with her too.
Okay. Ms. Parsons, what I can do is if you do not have any direct communication by email with Mr. with Attorney Galvin, I can put you two in, 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 in in touch via email if that's, if that'll satisfy everybody.
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Parsons, do you mind if I, do you mind if I hear from, from a couple of other people that may want to talk?
Go ahead. I'm gonna go have a snack.
I appreciate it, Mary. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wants to talk here? I got a Patrick Ronan. Talk to me, sir.
Um, okay. Good evening, Mr. Rosa, Mr. Baker, Mr. Haines, and Mr. Brennan and Mr. Tansey. I appreciate your service to the town. I do. It's quite refreshing watching all of you tonight. But what we have here is a clear and present danger to our town, to our drinking water, to our environment and to our neighborhood. Please do not grant these waivers. I'm begging you. This is my neighborhood. It's my town. I happen to like it as well. And again, I appreciate the fact that you all live here. You actually care. I can tell that. Cause I know you're not doing this for, you're doing this because, you know, you, you, you're volunteering your time for this and I appreciate that. And there is a lot of time. But what we have here from Mr. Andrew Nico and the builder is a clear and present danger to this neighborhood is very obvious to all of us here that this is not just a 40B. This is right on and next to our water supply. Is it really worth it to jam this thing in here? Guys, men and women, ladies and gentlemen, it is not. It is not. It is not the right thing to do. It's dangerous. What we have is a Flint, Michigan waiting to happen. And I'm not exaggerating. I think all of us know that there's a risk here. And that we're all here because we care as well as all these other people who are gonna let speak. Mr. Andrew Nico, I, I refer to you. If this was your neighborhood, how would you like it? I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Rosa. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Again, I don't want to, I don't want to cut anybody off. I know there's a lot of people that want to speak in opposition. I'm gonna leave it at that. Most everybody that's here wants to speak in opposition. We're all opposed, you, you all seem to be opposed at the, of the, you know, on the same, on, on the same things. So what I'm gonna do is I, I apologize. We do have to cut this meeting. We have another thing that we have to get to. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say that we need to make a motion to continue to a date specific. What do we got for?
Motion.
Well, hold on. What do we got for possible dates here? And I look to Attorney Galvin or Kim Frizio. Where are you?
I know that the fourth is full. And I think your next meeting is the 22nd of January.
Kim, can you confirm?
I have the next meeting as the 19th of January for Conrock. And then after that, so that's 7:30 and then after that, nothing.
Bonrock's gonna be late.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure whether that will or it won't be, but I think maybe you ought to have a special meeting for this. There's enough people, there's enough people that it justifies it.
Uh, yeah, cause it sounded like we're gonna have to, I, it's, I, I want the, I want the people in town to be able to voice their opinion. I know that everybody's opposed, but I want them to be able to voice it. So it almost sounds like we're gonna need to spend one, one, one specific meeting just so everybody can vote, just so everybody can voice their opinion. So what's, uh, I heard the 22nd and I heard the 19th?
Uh, no, use the dates that Kim is giving you, not the ones that I'm giving you. I think I gave you the wrong date.
Kim, talk to me again.
Yeah, I have the 19th. At 7:30 is already booked. So anything after that, or if you want a separate day? I don't know if you want it still in January or if you want out further.
Uh, what's after, what's the next one after, after the Conrock one? Is it February?
February.
Motion to continue till February 7.
Is that what it is?
Uh, no, that, February 7th is, is a Sunday. The 9th is a Tuesday on February.
February 9th.
Yeah, the 9th.
Uh, February 9th, Attorney Galvin, is that?
That's, Rob, can we do it at 6:30 so that we'll have time for everybody to talk?
We can med with.
Or 7 o'clock?
Once, once we figure out the date, then we can make a motion on the, on, on the time. What the?
Excuse me, Mr. Rosa. I'm terribly sorry for interrupting, but my name is Jessica Laverty. I was just wondering if, I think you can very well see in the comments, people are pretty, you know, down bummed out about the fact that we only got to hear from two people. If you guys would just give five more minutes, let another two people talk just for good, you know, just good neighborly, we appreciate what you're saying. If nothing else, you know, when we're looking at kicking this out another two months, we've got a lot of people really upset about this, really concerned. And I think just giving a couple more people the ability to voice their concerns might do a lot for as far as morale is concerned, if, if you would consider that.
I would consider that, but in the, in, in, in the grand scheme of things, everybody's against it.
Oh, I understand that. I absolutely understand that, but I think that we're all against it for different reasons. You know what I mean? And I think that while we all hearken back to the concern of our water supply and, you know, quite frankly, where this falls in violation of CWA 407 and potentially 404 as well as 403, you know, we have to stop and wonder why the hell are we even flirting with this? But nonetheless, at the end of the day, you know, we just, people just want to be heard. And I think that would do.
That's absolutely true. Mr. Andronico, can you, can you speak to anything this, that this lovely lady has said?
I, I'm not sure that I can with, with any level of expertise. So I'll either refer to my engineer, Pat Brennan, or we can, or, or if that could be put in writing and we could respond to it, but I don't specifically have the level of expertise to speak to those comments specifically. No.
Okay. Ms. Laverty, have you, have you put the, have you put that concern in writing?
Um, not to them, but they, they themselves asked for a waiver of CWA 407. Which, quite frankly, we are in no business to do that. We, we cannot go over federal Wetlands Protection Acts for a freaking money pit. Especially when we're right next to our aquifer, when we're right next to our drinking water. This is a thing that I know that we're gonna get, you know, the, the snarky remarks that we got before about, well, it's 40B. We want you to be happy, but it doesn't matter if you are. No. At the end of the day, federal environmental protection law outweighs your 40B. And that's it. And we all need to start being honest with each other. AKA not saying, well, I had this conversation with this department and they said, everything's fine. And then 10 minutes later, we get a piece of paper that says, no, they have a amount of concerns that have been listed out. We have a lot of concerns with this situation and I. situation, and I feel that anytime even when members of your board start to say something that they have that are legitimate concerns, they get dismissed ultimately when, well, we did this, we did this. Well, no, if you're not have the minor act of listening to people, never mind the simple fact, go back to step one. This was the Boston Whaler site. We all know what was it. My grandfather used to be part of the Water and Sewer Department as head of the Water Department. I know how filthy that site is. I know how fil- how desperately out of date our water department is. Unfortunately, no back to the rooms. Our sewer department, our water department's capacity are not where they need to be. That's a separate fact. At the end of the day, you are putting what is potentially a very dangerous building on top of our water supply for an initial gain that inevitably could take out the water supply for the entirety of our town. So is it worth it for this one forty B project to go ahead and demolish the property value of every freaking business and residential place in this entire town because our water is gone? And you can roll your eyes all you want at me, sir. That is just fine, but I will point blank tell. Oh, no, honey, I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to the other gentleman that was rolling his eyes.
All right.
And I do, I I will call you by name if I need to. It's not a problem. I'm saying point blank at the end of the day. I know this is your job. I know this is what you do, but there are concerns and there are, you know, thousands of people in this town that will be negatively affected if this goes the wrong way. And just winks and nods and haha, it's okay, and we're gonna test one every, every is not okay. The the wetlands and the bernal pool, and I have no doubt based on what we've seen tonight, that your company was told one thing versus what was legit um going on. But at the end of the day.
All I can say is that we 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 try to genuinely respond to all of these concerns, and we understand that they're real concerns. And we do that by providing engineered documentation, which is reviewed by the town's engineer. That is the best way that we can address these.
Yeah, but that doesn't, you know, that doesn't get in the way of what's going on with the Clean Waters Act. And that's where you've got a problem. That's not, you know, what this is, you know, and and per what Chief Jackson is saying, you know, nobody that builds this lives in lives in Rockland. We still couldn't get a direct answer as far as how many forty Bs we have in in Rockland. Literally, we have a guesstimate. We don't even know if we're close to our limit. And again, regardless, I, you know, I don't want to monopolize everybody's time, but we have serious environmental concerns for it, you know. Thankfully, my boss happens to be a pretty knowledgeable person on it and has allowed me to have a little bit of insight into how to attack this, but, you know, at the end of the day, we just want to be heard, and this is our water. And, you know, I see a ring on your finger there. You wouldn't want your family to grow up drinking toxic water, period.
We and that's of course, and we certainly understand it. We believe that the studies and the testing and the documentation documentation we have provided um relieves the concerns that you've expressed. It is up to the board and the board's peer reviewers to review the documentation that we've put forth. And if there is an error or if there is a dispute, we will hear it to our best of our ability with our own professional engineers. We have determined determined that it is a clean site and it's a sustainable site. If there is errors, if there are errors in our submission, then we are more than willing to hear them and respond to them, but that is the best that we can do is put together thoughtful engineer-reviewed packages for your peer review. That is the best that we can do, and we are here to respond to any discrepancies or questions that may arise on based on those submissions.
And the other thing I would actually add, since I have gone ahead and taken over everybody else, I apologize to my my townmates. Um, the site from Wilson Street. As we were all concerned, it's gonna be a big black wall from Wilson Street. Um, last time I asked to see what the mockups from Wilson Street would be, I got a picture of like landscaping. Do we have the the view vantage point from Wilson Street? Is it gonna be a big black five-story wall, you know, that we're looking at?
I I would, I guess I would say to the board, if if that is, if there's some specific view or rendering that you would that you request.
We asked for it at the last. I specifically asked for it.
You know, but I can only respond to the requests from the board. There's no way I could possibly.
Rosa said asked you after I asked for.
And Mr. And Mr. Rosa put together an official document that asked for everything that we were to provide, and we responded to that.
Okay, well.
Hold on, hold on. First and foremost, Ms. Lavery, for the record, can you tell me, can you tell me where you live, please?
Twenty seven Vernon Street.
Okay, Mr. Deandry, Mr. Adronico. Can you give us a three-quarter? Can you give us some sort of profile, you know, some sort of view from her house as to what the building is gonna look like?
Some. My house is nowhere near it. I want the view um from, I now I just lost my train of thought.
Um, we need, we need something specific so we can give it to him, so.
Down Wilson Street.
Down Wilson Street. I want the view from Wilson Street because the way I figure, looking at it, we're gonna see from Wilson Street, we'll see nothing but that berm and then a five-foot or five-story black wall.
So so if I'm standing in the middle of Wilson Street, say halfway down or close to the development, what is that view, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Got it. I do remember asking for that. I may not have put that in the last in the last.
It is no problem. It literally went on forever, but I just, that was something I still want to see because frankly, we have, you know, the right to see if we're gonna be looking at, if the folks in that area are going to be looking at, you know, a looming enormous black wall, I think they should know about it. So, thank you for my extended time. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, there is a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor. Uh, I got a motion for to go to what date? Remind me, please, Kim.
Ninth of February.
February ninth.
February ninth. Uh, I also have a more as a part of that motion, I think it was for six thirty.
Six thirty or seven, whatever. Good for the board. The rest of the guy.
Go six thirty if you can.
Six thirty.
And Veronica, because does that work for you?
Anything works for me.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Why is this the ninth and not the second? I'm just confused about the date.
Kim.
That's a good point. That's a sun. That's a Saturday.
No, February.
We could do February second if you'd like. February second.
Isn't that our regular meeting date?
We don't have anything booked for February, so you want to do the second, I think.
We usually do the first or the third.
Throughout the ninth, so we'll have anything booked in February.
Is usually the first of the third, so and it's, I would say if we've got nothing for the second, go for the second.
Every second.
I will send my motion, make a motion for February second at six thirty.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I got a second, Mr. Tansey. I got a second. I need a roll call myself. Um, that's a yes, Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Haynes.
Yeah.
Mr. Tansey.
Yes.
There we go. All right, so continue to February second at six thirty. Uh, moved. Um, Mr. Adronico will be in communication between myself, Attorney Galvin, would, we're gonna, we'll solve it, we'll solve this, we'll solve this. Um, and then and then from there, again, if I figure out, if I think of anything else, I will put it, I will put it together. Attorney Galvin and I will be in contact with the list and go for it again.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
The board has to stay on because we're gonna finish Cresco.
All right, I am gonna, I am gonna recommend that we take that everybody take a ten.
Um, five, five minutes, ten o'clock.
Ten fifteen.
One minute.
One minute, I I.
Yeah, one minute. We need to um adjourn this particular meeting.
Yeah, do we need a motion to adjourn?
No, you're not adjourning. You're you've concluded this matter. It's continued. Now we're gonna go, we're gonna uh have a deliberation on the Cresco matter.
We need a motion to go to the men's room.
No, you can just.
Here's your motion.
Break.
Somebody should have said depends.
All right, one, two, three, four. All right, we got everybody here. All right, we're ready to start talking?
Uh, Rob, do you want me to put that share screen back up again?
Uh, yeah, so we can, um, we've got the three, we've got the three, uh, the three things right off the bat that we have to, that we have to determine.
Right, and then that had the conditions too. Let me pull that up.
Okay, there we go.
By the way, and I can send it to Kim, we all have the same thing too.
Okay. All right, number one, we have to vote on the stat, uh, does the establishment, the establishment is designed to minimize any adverse impacts on the abutters and other parties of interest as defined. Um.
So what what I would tell you is that the establishment, the motion would be to make a finding that the establishment as condition uh as conditioned in the uh below is designed to minimize any adverse impacts to abutters and other parties of interest as defined in Mass General Law's Chapter forty-eight, section eleven, because it's because of the conditions you can make those findings.
So we need to, so we need to establish every every condition before.
Yeah, look at the outstanding condition really basically had to do with this right-hand turn. Uh, no egress there. You know, I looked at the chief's or the deputy chief's letter too, and um, I would tell you if I felt it was differently, but I kind of read it the way the applicant read it here.
Oh, I'm I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I had, I agree with that. I absolutely do agree with that. But just as someone who travels that road regularly, I know what's going, I I see the traffic on that road, and it's it's my personal.
There's, uh, look at, you guys get to make the decision. I don't get to make the decision. But what I would tell you, it just seems like bizarre that they have frontage on the street. I I get it, the street's a nightmare, but they can't use it because they got a roundabout way of getting in another way. I don't know.
I absolutely, I absolutely agree with you. I I I hear what you're saying. Again, I just with with a separate entrance, with a separate entrance right at the that would that can be conditioned right at the intersection, I just find that I find I find that it's a better, I feel that it's a better way to access this site since we're good, since there's an easement, there's an easement agreement already in place that says that they can access the site that way.
What I what I thought I understood Attorney Silverman or one of the other persons to say was that this there's an access to utility agreement, but if uh, if they understood that that was gonna become their primary point of access, that might be very disturbing to the other property. So your call, but but I do think that our deputy was really concerned not about the entrance in, it was the entrance out.
Agreed. I I I absolutely agree, but like I said, it's my feeling. It's not the fear. It's not, it's it's not necessarily the feeling of the rest of the board and and I'm not, again, disagree with me if you want to. I I I I encourage you to.
I I, Rob, I love you so much that I would support whatever you say.
I get it. This is why I want to hear from the rest of my, the rest of the board on this because. I take it. This is why I want to hear from the rest of my, the rest of the board on this because I just, I travel it regularly and I know what, I know what kind of a nightmare that little stretch of road can be. Um, and to add this much traffic into one little section. I just want to make, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on this. And again, board members, if you, if you want to disagree with me, go for it. That's fine. I'm not going to look at you guys any different way. Um, but.
I disagree with you.
Thank you. All right. That's fine. That's fine. It's, if everybody, if everybody wants to, I'm, I'm, I'm voting with the flavor of the board. I just, I know that, I know that this area is difficult.
Unlike Attorney Galvin, I, I don't love you, but I agree with you.
Rob.
Greg.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We're talking about a left-hand turn from Hingham Street into the site. Right?
That I can, that I can see. That I can see.
Because if somebody comes down Hingham Street, right? They technically have two options. They could, you know, turn left into the, um, into that, call it the northern entrance.
Can't see that. I don't like that. But no, you know, you're right. We're talking about, we're talking.
They can do, they can do that if traffic prevails. If traffic conditions aren't prevailing, they could just go right right up to the, to the light, wait for the light and then turn left, you know, and access the site via the easement.
That's my, that is, that's my point.
Well, Greg, if I, if I may, Greg, just think of the number of accidents that are just at that Dunkin' Donuts where people try to do the same thing.
The, the road is one lane there and it's two lanes in front of this site.
Yeah, it's two, it's two lanes in front of the site, but it's also just before the, it's also just before the funnel.
But that's the best part that, that people will be stuck at the red light and you'll be able to make that left turn. And more often, if you're going to try to make a left turn at that light, you're going to be stuck in traffic. And most of the time, there really isn't any. It's only during rush hour. It's really bad.
Yeah, but if, if Tim, if you're stuck at a red light, you know, there, there's no traffic really, minimal traffic going through those, you know, two lanes. You might be able to make a, a left-hand turn because.
How, how about this? Why don't we, why don't we give them approval pending, let's say a, uh, ninety day review?
I, I, that was mentioned before. That was mentioned before and I, I, I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to, I'm willing to give it a review period.
Okay. Why don't we say that we can alter that, that the, the, um, the client, I'm losing my, it's late behind my bedtime.
No, I dig.
And, um, do as he requested, go either way and we review it again in ninety days.
All right.
I mean, if there is an issue, you can bet your life Lieutenant Zoli is going to let us know and let, let the applicant know as well.
Wait, are we talking, I'm, I'm in, I think we're talking about two different things now.
No, we're talking, we're all talking, we're all talking about the same thing. It's just, it's going in different directions. So.
We're talking, there, there are two questions on the table now. It's, do we, do we let people enter through that drive? And do we limit the exit to right hand only?
Uh, that I think is the, that I think is what we, what we need to, what we need to kind of look at. And I appreciate the, I appreciate the, the ninety day, um, the ninety day review period. Um, or we can even go ahead and we can even go six months. You know, we can even go, you know, give it a six month review or something like that, or even a year review. As long as we can look at it and, and, and come back at another point and just see what the traffic patterns are. I don't care what the, I don't care what the review time is. Ninety days would be a minimum. Uh, you know, maybe one year is a maximum, but if we're going to allow entrance into the Hingham Street and, you know, into the Hingham Street, uh, you know, access point and allow exit onto Hingham Street, but as a right-hand turn only. Cause that's it, that's, and, and Mr. Fakara, correct me if I'm wrong, that's kind of what we're looking at, correct?
Yep, that's right. And, and I think that's, that's a fair assessment. And, and as I mentioned before, I'll reemphasize, we'll keep an eye on it and flag this as a high priority item for the traffic manager on site. And if there's signs that need to be provided, we'll do that as well. And then we'll happily report, uh, not only to the board, but circle back with Rockland PD and let them know our findings within the first ninety days. If there are bottlenecks and we think there's an issue with public safety, we'll work with you guys to address them.
Mr. Hessian, you put, you put up ninety days. Does, is, is everybody, is everybody okay with the ninety days? Do we want to stretch it to a six month? Give it a full, you know, give it a full half a year, um.
The question on the ninety days, that's just applying to the issue of access, not the right turn, correct?
No, that would be, that would be basically traffic. That would be in, any and all traffic patterns that are going on with this. The concern, my general concern is that access point on, the direct access point on Hingham Street. I just don't want to see that causing any issues. Um, I can't see anybody in any, I can't see anybody wanting to, when it comes to exiting. I can't see anybody wanting to exit and take a left. I can only see them wanting to take a right when it comes to an exit. The smart person, if they know the area, and again, there are going to be some people that don't know the area, but the smart person, if they want to exit, they're going to exit at the rear of the, at the rear of the property and come out to the light and then take the left. Um, for a quick exit going north, you know, if you want to hit the highway, they're going to go out that Hingham Street access and they are going to take a right. Um, allowing people to, again, enter, enter off of Hingham Street from there. That's my biggest concern. That is my biggest concern. But I'm willing to, I'm willing to let it go and, and, and look at it after a review period. So if everybody agrees that that's kind of the way that we should go, um, then it's just a matter of how long the review period should be. Should it be three months? Should be six months? Should be a year? Who wants to weigh in on that?
I, I, I'm comfortable with six.
Okay.
Six months, you know?
I'll go with six.
All right, that's two. What else we got? Well, Mr. Mr. Baker?
I don't want to cause a problem. I'm, I'm comfortable with six months on the idea of access.
Okay.
But, but again, I'm just going to recommend that we split the issue and say the right turn is an absolute. We review six, six months, the idea of access.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to just, at this point, I'd like to, I'd like to default to what the applicant is requesting. But after six months, we will review, um, because again, Lieutenant Zoli was very specific about a right, you know, right turn only. I like that. I absolutely like that. But like I said, I want to see, uh, I want to see a review. And again, if six months works for everybody on the board, we can put that in there and that, and, and, and that's it. It's just a matter, it's just a matter of how Attorney Galvin words it.
And this will be in six months. This is the applicant, the board, maybe, uh, some information from police coming together in a public, in a public meeting to talk about it, right?
I, I would like that. I would, I would like that. So after the six months after, so something along the lines, months after opening, um, you know, six months after the initial opening of the, of the establishment, uh, the applicant would then come back to the board. Uh, and we discussed the, at a public hearing, we discussed the traffic patterns and if everybody's happy with it, including police, then there you go.
Mm-hmm. I, I think it's a plan.
Does everybody, does everybody on the board agree with that? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, I do.
I'm in.
Everybody's in, everybody's in, uh, Mr. Rob. Yep, Mr. Baker?
What happens if there's a within that six months, say there's five or ten accidents there?
Or any.
Or any. Do, do they have to come back to the board and rethink this whole thing?
Let me, let me ask a question and I think, uh, Mr. Silverman and Mr. Fakara and Mr. Boland is still on. If we have a review after six months and there's a problem there, would you agree with us that there could be a review of the uh, traffic conditions and potentially imposition of a, like a right hand turn, right turn out and/or limitations on coming in? I, I don't think we can do that without them because the way permit and approval law works, the board's not allowed to defer to a later time. Um, something that they have to decide now. That's always a possibility, but if the applicant agrees that they would, you know, track this and agree to that, I think we could do it with their consent. So I think we need to know from them.
Yeah, Bob, I'm happy to take that one. I think we'd be more than happy doing that. We've already been talking on the back end about that turn, um, and keeping in close contact with Rockland PD to track it and make sure we've got everything, uh, in terms of reporting that they're getting as well as our onsite uh, review and evaluation as well. So, uh, if and when the time comes, you guys want to come back to the cable, table, we'll have a full analysis for you and be prepared to talk about what's working. Maybe if it's not, what adjustments can be made.
All right. And Mr. and Mr. Raider, and I don't see him on the line here, but he's going to have to be in favor of this too, because he is actually the property owner that, uh, that the easement's over.
But the, the special permit holder is, is, um, is Cresco.
Okay. Yeah, but again, in the end, in, in the end, it was brought up that, you know, if the, if for some reason in the end, things get limited, that, uh, the property owner, the property, the property owner behind them, uh, may have, may have issue with that. I don't know. So everybody's going to have to be in favor of this.
Well, I spoke to Mr. Raider. Uh, I think it's safe to say the, the condition that we're talking about starting is what he wanted. So it sounds to me like the worst he's going to get is six months, the way he wanted it. And he can probably be a part of the decision six months from now, if, uh, we find there's a problem. So I know this is what he's been arguing for is to uh, try it without restricting to only right-hand turn and allow interest and egress through that Hingham Street entrance. So this is what he wants. You know, it's just a matter of whether, you know, it, it's going to continue after six months and he'll be able to state his position at that time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the line. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay. So I'm, yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm in favor of a trial period.
Okay.
Uh, to, uh, because I believe it's going to work. So I, I think if, I think we just need to prove it to the board that it's going to work.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's really the only way it's going to work, um, at this point. We have to, we have to test the waters.
I'm almost, I'm almost done.
Yeah, no, I just, I'm, I'm just going through here.
Hingham Street is rapidly becoming a very busy throwaway.
Needs a real rethinking. It needs a rethinking.
I agree with you completely, Tim.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And the one, and the, and the very first thing that needs to be done, that bottleneck just before Dunkin' Donuts has to go away.
It needs, really kind of needs a middle lane, like a, like a left or right turn only.
Oh, center lane.
Okay, I, I reworded a condition and hopefully everybody can see it now. And it's now number ten, which is still highlighted the number, but it says, based on an agreement with the applicant, there will not be any present limitation on access in egress from the, from, I put the unsignaled exit north at Hingham Street. I'll put entrance exit. Entrance. Slash exit north at Hingham Street. The applicant aboard agree that there should be a review of the traffic conditions associated with the unsignaled entrance.
Did I understand? Aren't we putting the right-hand turn limitation on this?
I don't know.
No. Like, I'd like to see that. And again, I think everybody was, and everybody was in favor of what Nick, of what Lieutenant, uh, Zoli said. And I think everybody agreed that Lieutenant Zoli, at this point, was concerned with only having a right-hand exit.
I agree.
Everybody agrees that?
Yeah.
Yes. Everyone drives from Hingham Street agrees.
Okay.
Other than a right-hand turn requirement for exiting traffic. Typically those righty and turn for exiting traffic are associated, they, they, they design these little like raised islands uh, and signage.
Just signage.
Just signage.
Lineage would be required.
Yeah.
Control by signage that.
Let a few scofflaws make.
Well, if, if they do with the wrong thing, if they do the wrong.
Harder for a fire, fire department to get in?
No.
No, okay.
It'll be, it'll be still the same with opening.
And, uh, the fight, the fight about little goal with just about anything if they have to. So I re, I reworded that now. It says, based on an agreement with the applicant, there will be not any present limitation on access and egress from the unsignaled entrance exit north at Hingham Street, other than a right-hand turn only requirement for exiting traffic controlled by signage. The applicant aboard agree, there should be a review of the traffic conditions associated with the unsignaled entrance exit at Hingham Street for the imposition of a condition restricting access and egress or I guess say further restricting further sticking access from the site to be, at a meeting to be conducted, at a, at a meeting to be conducted six months from the date of the opening. The applicant also agrees to the imposition of restrictions, limitations to the board concludes such restrictions or limitations are warranted after review.
As worded, Mr. Fakara?
I'm sorry, you broke up there, Chairman Wolfson.
As, as worded, are you, are you okay with that condition?
As much as I'd like to claim I'm, I'm an attorney, that's why I have my esteemed colleague Phil here. It reads well to me. I just want to make sure Phil's on board with this too.
So I am.
You good?
I am.
All right. The only other thing that I don't remember if we said, if we said in here is that any and all signage shall comply, uh, to the law, to, to zoning requirements and shall be reviewed by the building inspector.
Uh, we have a condition number five here. No signage should be printed against symbols of the big, um, all traffic signals. All traffic signs shall comply.
Bob's fingers are getting tired. I can tell.
Tonight was an easy night. I only did like a few pages. Comply with applicable, uh, Mass DOT standards. Standards.
And the only other thing is any, any and all signage on the building has to comply with, uh, with, with current zoning, uh, current zoning laws.
All building signage shall comply with the current. with the current Rockland zoning law.
That, and again, as reviewed by, by the building commissioner. So.
He's the one that determines building, uh, sign permits anyways.
Yeah, exactly. Um, anybody else got anything they want to add to this?
No.
Board members?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Chuck, good. Mr. Greg, uh, Tim?
I'm fine with conditions. I, I think I saw with the, uh, the dumpster is going to be fenced in, and I just wasn't sure if the applicant realized that. It's, the fence isn't shown on the plan. And, and when it came up earlier, I thought I would just make sure that we set it out.
I think we requested that, didn't we, Tim?
Yeah, we always fence it in if it wasn't shown on the plan. So, but it is in there.
Yeah, it's condition number seven, all marijuana waste shall be kept securely inside the premises, disposed of on a regular basis. Non-marijuana related waste shall be kept in a dumpster that is fenced and disposed of on a regular basis.
Yeah. I didn't want that one to be a surprise.
I, I mean, really a dumpster should be fenced in, otherwise, you know, it could become a source of blight and other issues. So I'm sure they won't mind that.
Uh, and then should we say anything about subject to, uh, subject to planning board approval and?
Uh, it just says the applicant shall obtain site plan approval unless otherwise directed by the building commissioner.
Um, other than that, uh, adherence to the, adherence to the current order conditions?
I think we say they have to comply with, uh, uh, let me see. I guess we could add a condition that comply with other, uh, local, state and federal permits and approvals. For applicable.
To take off your mittens when you're typing.
I'm sorry.
But this is good. He's given a spell check of run for their money.
So I think these are the conditions now.
Um, we've gone over all of them. I'm ha, I'm happy with them. Does anybody else need to add anything else? Everybody else happy?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so let's go up to the findings and, um, I'm just going to change one thing. Uh, I'll take this out now here. As conditioned. The establishment is designed to minimize any adverse impacts. Uh, you can see the, uh, establishment or applicant. It was just that it will meet all permitting requirements. The applicant has satisfied all the conditions, findings and requirements set forth here and I think you could just make that as one finding, um, as set forth here. You know, and then take a roll call, vote on it, and then you vote one more time to grant the special permit.
All right. Let me just read it one more time. The establishment, they're saying it will meet, uh, to do, yeah, and I satisfied all of the conditions, findings and requirements is set forth here in. Uh, so I need a, uh, I need to, I guess, a motion on the finding?
A motion to make those findings in the affirmative.
I need a motion. Things in the affirmative.
Make a motion to accept the findings in the affirmative.
All right, I've got, uh, I got a, I got first from, I got a motion from Chuck, from Mr. Hessian. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second from, uh, Mr. Baker. Uh, I need a roll call. Uh, where are we starting here? Mr. Tanzy?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Baker Jr.?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Hessian?
Yes.
Yes, there we go. All right, so.
Okay, now you're going to do one more motion. The motion be to grant the special permit as conditioned.
Need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we grant the special permit as conditioned.
Second?
Second.
I got a second. Roll call, myself, yes. Mr. Haynes?
Yeah.
Mr. Baker Jr.?
Yes.
Tanzy?
Yes.
Mr. Hessian?
Yes.
Don't move.
Okay, so now, Rob, you can give the spiel about the decision and, uh, Kim and I will work together to create this decision and, uh, get this filed within the next two weeks.
All right, Mr. Fikara, here's the spiel. Uh, the board is, we did that, uh, you retain, you will receive a copy, you will receive a decision in the mail with a date stamp. I know we already said this, but I'm going to do it. 21 days from the date stamp on the decision, go to the clerk's office, be equipped with certificate of no appeal. It will, uh, if no one's appealed, the clerk will give you a certification and a copy of the original decision. Go to the registry of deeds, actually right down the street from your site, um, and record them and have them recorded and then bring, and actually, this wasn't one of the conditions, but one of the conditions is always to show the building department approval of recording. I don't think you had that in.
It's, it's in here.
It is in there, all right.
Provide a copy to the building commissioner and the zoning board of appeals, condition 18.
Okay, so it is in there. Uh, everybody understand? Copy that, Chairman. Done.
Uh, now you just need a motion to adjourn so we can go to bed.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Second, roll call, myself, yes. Mr. Tanzy?
Yes.
The Haynes?
Yeah.
Mr. Baker Jr.?
Yes.
Mr. Hessian?
Sure.
Welcome if you got them. Thank you, gentlemen.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. Welcome to Rockland.
So much for your collaboration on this.
Not a problem. We look forward to having you in town. Have a good day.
Thank you all.